Good evening, everyone. Before we get started, I just want to read in accordance with open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll start the meeting with public comment. Anyone here for public comment? You can do it right there. State your name and address.
Rita Mullen, 29 Abbott Road, North Reading, Mass. I just want to public announcement, remind everybody that the annual Commissioner's Cup Golf Tournament will be held Sunday, October 1st at 12:30. And it's a shotgun start, but the big part about it is we are going to, the past three years, we've been saving our monies for a multi-generational community facility that we would like to put in town. So anybody that helps with this, and it may seem a long way away, but I just want to remind everybody that land utilization, recreation, and the Hillview are all working hard for this, and we have been able to, over the years, raise money to build Ipsutiva Park, the turf fields and track. And this may take a little longer than it took to raise the monies for that, but that's our goal. So as many people that could be interested in coming out to the Commissioner's Cup, Sunday, October 1st, please feel free to call recreation at the town hall and sign up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mullen. Okay. Any other, anyone else for public comment? Can you hear us? Do you need me to turn the speakers up?
I can hear you.
Okay. Okay. We're going to go to the next thing on the agenda, which is the Pride survey presentation. Right there. Go to the podium, it's up to you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Amy Luckwitz. I'm the Director of Youth Services, and I currently oversee the Federal Drug-Free Communities Grant, and I'm very happy to be here tonight. It marks a key moment for us when we are sharing information with the community about what our results have been from the Pride survey. So the copies that I'm handing out to, I know you had a copy in your Dropbox, but this is an updated copy. So I want to make sure you had that. So the Pride survey was administered to middle school and high school students back in March and focuses on drug use among students. We're focusing tonight on youth non-use. And that's intentional, because we really want to make sure that we have as most positive spin on this as we possibly can. So in the numbers, they might seem a little odd to you, and I'll just remind everybody that they're non-use numbers. We also invited parents to do an online survey that Mr. Bernard helped us send out. We received 109 parent surveys, 100 and, I'm sorry, 191, 119 from high school parents and 72 middle school parents. The survey window was open from March to May of 2017.
How many parents are there?
I do not know. I do have the student number though. Yeah, sorry. The question was, how many parents total were available? And that's, I don't have that number, because some have children in middle school and high school. So we were looking into that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Continue, please.
The goal of the survey was to look into gathering information related to four substances listed. In our line of work, we call them A-T-O-D, alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs. Here you see it as prescription drug use. We do have national data from the 2016 Monitoring the Future Study that was conducted by the University of Michigan for the National Institute on Drug Abuse that we'll be comparing North Reading to. And finally, we were required to report on these four topics regarding the four substances listed above as part of the Federal Drug-Free Communities Grant. So in total, we were required to ask at least 16 questions. It was four questions each about the four substances. So let's get into the data. Again, I'll remind everybody that the numbers that you see there are related to past students who did not use. 1,146 students were surveyed out of a possible 1,387 students, which means we surveyed about 83 percent of all the students in grades six through 12. That was a pretty decent sample size. Everybody involved in that, from the local level all the way up to the Pride survey people and our evaluator, were very happy with that response number. So this slide shows percentage of students who said they did not use in the past 30 days. We're going to look in a second to see how we compare to the national average, but I will point out the sixth graders and eighth graders reported the highest percentage of non-use. 12th graders unfortunately reported the lowest percentage of non-use across all substances when compared to other grades. In particular, I'll show, have highlighted here that 12th graders, only 48.2 percent of them said that they did not use alcohol in the past 30 days. That number was, stood out to us. So I had mentioned that we had done a parent survey as well. And again, 191 total parents were surveyed. So the numbers you're seeing here reflect parent perception of their child not using substances in the past 30 days. Sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade parents all reported 100 percent perception of non-use across all substances, meaning that they had the lowest perceived use. Parents of 12th graders had the lowest perception of non-use across all substances, meaning that 12th grade parents had the highest perceived use. We did find that to correlate, especially among 12th graders. So we asked a question about if students felt that the substances indicated were risky. Percentage, so, excuse me, specifically if they felt that they were at moderate or great risk. Tobacco was reported as the highest, as having moderate or great risk by eighth graders indicated there. That was something interesting to us, and that actually highlights what we're seeing across the national average, related to the education behind the dangers of alcohol, I'm sorry, of tobacco use. Marijuana was reported as having moderate or great risk, the lowest, excuse me, of moderate or great risk by 12th graders. You see that as the 27.3 percent. That means that only 27.3 percent of seniors felt that marijuana was moderate or great risk.
Yes, please, Maria.
Yes.
Did you define moderate or great risk in the survey?
In the survey, they did.
What was there outstanding?
I'd have to grab it for you and get your copy. So we thought we would compare that sort of information against parent perception. We recognize that there may be duplicate numbers here, but we were calculated, we just calculated the data that we had received, because you'll see some duplicate numbers that don't seem quite right to us. We sent that back to the Pride survey for some clarification. Seventh grade parents perceived prescription drugs as the lowest ranked substance for moderate or great, or great risk. Eighth, ninth, and 10th grade parents perceived tobacco, marijuana, and prescription drugs as the highest ranked substances for moderate or great, or great risk. And I will just point out here that eighth grade, something's going on in eighth grade, where there is definitely a very strong health program. That's something that the Coalition is supporting again this year. I'll mention that we just purchased about $2,000 of educational materials for the eighth grade health class. So now we need to start looking at maybe some younger grades and also in the high school grades in the next fiscal grant year, which, by the way, starts October 1st. So we asked the students what they thought about if their parents approved or disapproved of use. So what you're seeing here is the percentage of students who perceive their parents, that their parents feel that the use of substance is wrong or very wrong, that was not defined, by the way, I'll add that in. Alcohol is the only substance not recorded 100 percent disapproval rates across all grades. Prescription drugs had the highest parent disapproval rate, according to the students. So we wanted to know about what students thought about how easy it was to get these substances. And for these, you'll see that the definition is fairly easy or easy to get. Marijuana was reported as the least accessible substance at 2.8 percent accessibility, which was reported by seventh graders. Let's see, where are we at? Yeah, so this is overall. Alcohol was reported as the easiest substance to attain across all grade levels. So 65.9 percent of 12th graders reported it was easy or very easy to get. 8 percent of sixth graders reported that alcohol was easy or very easy to get, and was reported as the most accessible substance around sixth graders. I had some conversations with some community members about this. We did not ask specifically about who was giving them alcohol in the survey, but a point was made to me, and I thought it was a very good point, that when you're a freshman or you're in middle school, you don't probably know many 21-year-olds. But by the time you're a senior in high school, your friends probably have some siblings who are 21. And so we thought that that might have some influence there, although in the next survey, we are going to start asking questions more specifically about sources. So this is about students self-identifying when they began each substance use. And according to a study by Columbia University, underage drinkers account for about 11.4 percent of all the alcohol consumed in the U.S. That's a pretty staggering amount. The average age for teen boys to try their first amount of alcohol nationally is 11 years old. For teen girls, it's 13. Here you see us, unfortunately, and tobacco, getting a little bit younger than that. This is not divided by male and female, but if you average those two out to be 12, you can see that we're a little bit better than that in this area. I will tell you that there's not a great data set for comparing to national average in this category, because for most studies, they're very specific to a population, either divided by race or by situation. For example, those incarcerated or already in a treatment facility. So it's not great, we don't have a great apples-to-apples on this one, but we do have the 11 and 13-year-old data set. Here we also see highlighted per grade the substances that the students started using at the youngest age. Alcohol is the most prevalent substance, with some tobacco and prescription drugs standing out. The number in parentheses that you see here is the number of responses that we got to that question per grade per substance. And I wanted to include that, because, for example, let's say we looked at the alcohol sixth grade number, and we see the average age of starting was 14.2. Well, if we only had one response to that, that's not an average, that's one answer. But here we had five to that. I'll scroll up, and you see among 11th graders that you see 33 students answered that question, and that was the average. So for students that identified that they, or did not answer, or identified that they had not used, those answers were not included here. So we did start checking out about where students use. And again, this is different than where students got the alcohol. And you'll see, a friend's house is a pretty popular place. Car was answered as well. Prescription drugs were answered at school, and that was really not a high number, I'll tell you that. It was just that it happened to tie with the second-most answer. So looking at us versus the national average. The data was again collected by the National Institute on Drug Abuse, NIDA, for their Monitoring the Future Study. These are 2016 numbers. Data was only collected in grades eight, 10, and 12 for this national data, so that's why you don't see every grade represented here. North Reading substance use was reported as higher than the national average when data was available, except for alcohol use among 10th and 12th graders and marijuana use among 12th graders. So you can see again here, this is, this is actually, I think that's a typo, so that should be, yeah, that's right. So that's non-use. So alcohol among 12th graders nationally, 66.8 percent of 12th graders nationally do not use. In our town, it's 48.2 percent. That's alarming. That's a pretty significant difference, almost 20 percent difference. So you'll see a lot of our next steps addressing alcohol use. So a couple of conclusions. There's an increased, there's an increase in use across all substances as students get older. Use clearly peaks at grade 12. Sixth and eighth graders report the highest percentage of non-substance use. Seniors reported the lowest percentage of non-use. The majority of students see tobacco as the most harmful substance. And again, I hark back to the fact that there's a really great, strong campaign out there about the dangers related to tobacco use. Parents perceive tobacco, marijuana, and prescription drugs as moderate or great risk of harm. As students age, the perception of parental disapproval of substance use declines. Alcohol was reported as the easiest substance to obtain across all grades. A large percentage of seniors reported alcohol was easy or very easy to get. The most popular place to use substances across all substances is at a friend's house. North Reading substance use was reported as higher than the national average in three So what are we doing about this? Well, as everybody here knows, we're part of a federal drug-free communities grant, and we use the seven strategies for community change, and we need to really look at those to be more effective with that. We're looking to partner with schools to uncover additional preventive strategies, and I had mentioned to, maybe partner with some more of their health classes to be a little bit stronger in that area. Partner with schools to increase protective factors and decrease risk factors. We're refocusing our 12-month action plan to include alcohol, and I will highlight that one. Previously, when Chief Murphy and I were putting together our 12-month action plan for the year one of the Drug-Free Communities Grant, we had identified marijuana and prescription drug use as our two main categories. Although you could do 100, they ask you to address at least two, and we are now going to relook at that to include a focus on marijuana and alcohol. Now we have that data to back that up. We're going to consider repeating the Pride survey in the fall of 2018, although I have to be honest with you, I don't know if we're going to use Pride again. They were the recommended vendor. I'm not entirely happy with their communication, so we might look at that and using, doing something in-house using the Scantron system. It'll save us a lot of money, and we'll be able to ask more specific questions that the Community Impact Team has interest in, again, related to where, where are these products coming from. We're going to continue to recruit active participants in our coalition. Coalition, I'm very happy to see there's a large crowd here tonight, and I'd like to extend the offer for anybody who is interested in volunteering with the Community Impact Team. Each action team meets about once a month, that includes the Drug Coalition. Marcy Bailey recently agreed to take over as the chairperson, the volunteer chairperson for that coalition. We're very excited about that. We're going to continue to partner with North Reading Public Schools Health Education to provide data that helps support their curriculum. I will tell you that the health teachers have been very active in asking me for this information, because they want to make sure that the curriculum backs that up. And we are going to pursue a social host ordinance relating, regarding illegal alcohol and drug use, and social host ordinance on drug paraphernalia. And that's it.
Board members, Abby, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Can you hand to the mic?
Check in. Is there any cross with your stuff at the middle or high school related to education about drugs and alcohol? In other words, instead of just having it be the health teacher, is it also built into biology, social sciences, whatever else?
So my answer is yes and no, and also, I'm not entirely sure. What I do, what I do know happens is that Massachusetts curriculum really focuses on crossbreeding of subjects. I know for sure that it's happening at the health, health department. What I also know is that in other classes, maybe not overtly, they are working at increasing protective factors, and that could be things like advocating for yourself. So is it explicit? Probably not. But are those other teachers working on things that are helping reduce risk? Yes. That answers your question. And at the elementary school as well? Yes.
Then going back to the parent survey about risk factors, I was a little bit surprised at the, I would think that most parents thought that our prescription drugs were 100 percent risky, and that wasn't what came out of this. No. And the other thing I'd like to add is that when AIDS education became something that people wanted in their schools, in one form or another, a lot of schools said, "We don't have time in the curriculum to have a course about AIDS education. You don't need a course in any of this. You need to include it in other, in other courses that are already there." So you hit a lot of kids a lot of times in a lot of different ways.
I agree. You had mentioned about parents acknowledging prescription drug use, and there could be some correlation between parents acknowledging that, what's a good example, ADHD medication might be abused? So we don't have a full explanation of what the parents were thinking at the time, but they could be acknowledging that.
Amy, just a quick question. Were the kids given examples of prescription drugs when they took the survey?
Yes.
Do you know what examples they were given?
Perk 30s, OxyContin.
The usual suspects.
ADHD medications, yes. Alcohol was also defined, including anything from beer to spritzers and everything in between.
Second part question, do you know if there's any, not the word, like a cross-contamination between the prescription drugs and the marijuana, given that our state has?
I don't have an answer to that, it's a great question.
Okay.
There's a lot of confusion, I will speak to this. There's a lot of confusion among students about the legalization of marijuana. The question that I get asked all the time is, why would our, our government, they don't know at what level, why would our government legalize something if you're telling me it's harmful? And that's a really tough question to answer. And those come up at health class all the time. I've been sitting in health classes where those, those kids have asked the health teacher those questions, who, by the way, they have great answers, far better than I, but we're going to be looking to help them out with that.
Well, it's a confusing message we're giving to kids.
And, you know, to be clear, our, our approach is, we are against it for youth use.
Michael.
Mr. Siri.
Two things. You know, I sat on the CIT several years, and if we go back a few years, when we talked about the whole drug issue, right, I kind of got a sense in our conversations that it wasn't present at a high school level, it began later. So does this survey come up with a real surprise, or?
To whom?
To you.
Probably us sitting here, probably not.
Probably not.
To some parents, I'm certain it will be. To some administrators, it could be. Mr. Bernard was very cooperative in helping us get this. I think the alcohol numbers were surprising, or, I guess the better word would be upsetting.
And my second question was, have you already presented this to the school board?
They got first shot at it, yes.
Thank you.
So it's great data, and obviously the next step, and I see that you have some next step slides here, but it really, you can't let this data die, all right? I mean, clearly. And the next subject we're going to talk about, I think, has a direct correlation to this. And I really do hope that parents get an opportunity to see this, maybe even in the next level down from what you presented here tonight. I don't know if any board members have anything else?
I just had a, just maybe some insight on that parent perception of risk or harm, how it slides, it diminishes. Why would that be the case?
As seniors, towards seniors, towards the grade, you mean?
Right. Or any grade. Why would they say, "Oh, it's not harmful at sixth grade, but it is at 12?"
I wasn't sure if I was even reading it right when I looked at it.
Yeah, great question.
Do you know why that?
I mean, perception is everything, right? So if, if anybody, not parents, but if anybody thinks it's the norm, they might think it's less risky. There's a million answers you could come up with.
But clearly, when you see the eighth grade, the ninth grade, it's, it's a wow.
Yeah.
It was, I was wowed when I saw the data. Yes?
At the, Rita Mullen. Rita Mullen.
No, you needed it. Thank you.
At the, one of the youth service meetings, we had the three of the elementary school principals, and, and we also had, at another meeting, the vice principal and the principal of the middle school. And when they came in, they realized how important it is now, because we said we want to try to help them. It's, the school has, administration has to look at how you can work this in, and what Abby said is, it would be nice to have everybody talk about it, but they can't. They, they've made it very clear that they have so much on their plate, what they have to teach and what they can't teach, other than try to slide some things in. They really don't, unable to do a great job of talking about it all the time. So what we've talked about in, in our grant, there's also some money that we have that we could use within the school system, with the teachers, to be able to run some, whether it's youth service classes in there, or something on alcohol and drugs, do it at a younger age. And they understand that it's not like it was when we were kids, when you were a kid, who's younger than me, not you, Steve.
I'm still young.
You. When you were, when you were kids, it's much more difficult that, you know, kids nowadays, by the time they're in the sixth grade, they've already been dealing with this subject. We didn't deal with it until we were a certain age, so the principals of all realized, we want to try to find a way to work this back, like the dare back in the school systems, grade two, three.
Perhaps not dare entirely, but, yeah. Like, something like dare. But I just want to highlight one last thing, and that's, this is one strategy, is providing education, one of seven. What we're going to talk about in a second with social host ordinance is one more strategy. We can tell kids to their blue-in-the-face all the information, but without balancing all of these things, it's just not going to work. And so I had a conversation with a parent today who said, "I just want my kid to learn from my mistakes." At that age, brain development is so, such an interesting subject, and it's so important for adults to understand, because we don't remember, we went through it, so we don't remember what it was like back then always. They're not able to necessarily receive the information through lecture, the way adults can. And so I am not a proponent of just saying, "Let's just bang at it at school." We need to have a culture about, a cultural change about this, and that includes our, looking at our own attitudes about alcohol and alcohol around children, and what is normal in this town? Is it normal to, you know, every party, that there's alcohol in red solo cups and kids are walking around with that? Those are some things we need to look at. And so that's kind of what this next part is about.
If you don't have any other questions, I'd like to transition right into that next subject. I know you already gave a presentation on it, so I'm not looking for another presentation, but I believe the board really had some, just wanted to get more of an input from the chief, is if we're going to support this for town meeting, we really want to make sure we understood why it's important to the police department.
I guess to set it up, would you like an overview of the file ourselves?
Yes, if you could, just a quick one for the folks that are listening, or the others that are here in the audience, just to refresh everyone's memory.
All right, so I'm going to be reading from, okay, so the social host ordinance that the Community Impact Team is asking that the board support is essentially, it's a bylaw that makes it illegal to provide an environment where underage drinking takes place, regardless of who provides the alcohol. So just a couple of points. Who is a social host? Anyone who knowingly allows the possession or consumption of alcohol by underage drinkers on private property. This includes, but does not limit to, the person who owns, rents, or leases, or otherwise has control of the premises, the person who's in charge of the premises, or the person who organizes the event. The law does have some exclusions. It does allow the person, or a parent, to furnish alcohol to their own child. Essentially, it doesn't allow it, it just doesn't prohibit it. It's very similar to the mass criminal laws as well. The purpose of this bylaw is to prevent discouraged underage alcohol consumption. And by that, the police department will be charged with enforcing it. So if an officer responds to a complaint about an event, a normal course of action, the officer would make his own observations, conduct an investigation. If they're able to determine that underage drinking is occurring on the premises, they would try to determine who's in control of the property. So that's kind of an overview of, of the social host ordinance. So as you know, there's a fine attached to that, but there's also a criminal element that's separate from, from this. We're not looking to create a new law for us to enforce. This is, this is in partnership with the Community Impact Team, essentially to deter this from occurring. We're trying to use this as an educational piece, so that it's difficult for us to educate the community on the criminal aspect of mass general laws, because if we continue to do it time and time again, I think the community's going to, you know, start ignoring it, essentially. We're going to try to use this as an educational tool in many different arenas, whether it's in the schools, through our Community Impact Team, at our social events here, through the Board of Selectment, through the Town Administrator's Office. So that's our main goal behind it. I know you guys have some questions regarding some of the legal end of it, which I'm here to answer. Hopefully, I'll be able to answer all the questions.
Okay. Board members.
The two lawyers.
Two lawyers.
I just have a quick question, actually. Chief, I have three quick questions. If you know the answer to this, how many calls do, do the police report to, maybe, let's say on an annual basis, where they observe underage drinking? Do you know, Abby?
So I looked at the data before coming in. It's difficult. We get a lot of complaints, and typically when we go there, nobody answers the door. So that's going to, that's difficult to really get a good number on it. But it, over the summertime, because I'll take that, we respond to at least 10 to 15 pies where it's alleged that there's underage drinking. We've had a few incidents this year where we respond, the kids run, we've had reports of kids getting injured, running from us. That's not what we want. That's not going to make it better, especially if they're intoxicated. So I guess, you know, backing up is, again, we're trying to stop this from actually occurring rather than us responding and taking criminal action against a family member or a student themselves, because I'm not sure that that's going to help get them to essentially stop what we want. I mean, we want the underage drinking, and clearly, the survey opened our eyes as well. I think the perception of the parents is what concerned me more. We knew that, you know, the kids, that the kids are drinking, I mean, it's, it's not a secret. The numbers were a little bit more than what we thought they were. But, you know, when we deal with parents, the parents think it's a safe place. But, you know, when we deal with parents, the parents think it's a safe place to have kids at their house, drinking. It's not a safe place, because they can't control everybody, but either way, it's, there's a reason why the legal drinking age is 21. That's it. That should be the, I mean, that should be the baseline for everyone. It's just not occurring that way. You know, oh, I took everybody's keys, you know, we hear it all, but, you know, kids, you know, their decision-making under the influence is not the best. Nobody's is, but it's, even for young kids, it's certainly diminished more. But this health issue is involved as well. We've had two alcohol poisonings with juveniles this year, transported to the hospital. Last year, we had an officer find somebody that was passed out in the woods. You never know what was gonna happen in that particular situation. You know, so we're responding to this, and we just don't wanna continue to respond without joining with the community impact team, and trying to fend off that tragedy.
Go ahead, you got one more left.
Two more. My second question has to do with that, because the ones I'm familiar with, where there's a medical transport of someone with poisoning, the parents are super disciplined parents, who are super watchful over their kids, and would not have allowed it to happen, and kids are extremely crafty in how they get it into the house, and where they store it in the, in the, in the house, in the ceiling tiles and everything. So, kids are super crafty. What, what's the appeal? Let's say a parent, you know, really tried to do everything he or she could, or they could, to prevent it, and it still happens. Do they have a right to appeal it? And then, my last question is, do you know any other communities that have a similar type of bylaw?
Sure. So, there is a process for an appeal, through the court, moving district court, through the clerk's office. It's like any bylaw appeal. And I get what you're saying. So, in that scenario, where you said kids are crafty, you should know if there's alcohol in your house. You're gonna see the behavior change. You know, alcohol is one of those things where you are going to smell it. Now, if you walk away, and there's 15 young kids there, you have to suspect that somebody's going to pull a fast one on you. So, it's important for you to be on top of it. Where I thought you were going with your question was, and this is what happens to us a lot, is we have a parent that's very strict, but goes to somebody else's house, and has no idea what, they just drop their kid off into. So, that's, you know, maybe that parent now, with this social host bylaw, if it were passed, maybe that parent asks the question, who's gonna be home, who's in charge? Because, again, we're trying to educate with this. So, there's gonna be a lot that we would be able to ride off of this, and it's not, again, not the $300 fine, you know, people would be willing to pay that right away. But there's a whole backend with this, civil issues that they may deal with, and also criminal issues, so, again, we'll use this as more of a deterrent. And you had--
And do you know of any other communities that have something similar?
So, I spoke with the Melrose chief, they have something in place. Their violation process is a little bit different, but he says it's been very successful. He says, you know, we put this in place, and it's, I didn't ask him what the data was, so I don't know what the percentage is, but he said it significantly helped them.
Good.
Mr. Schultz. Chief, I think this is a great ordinance. The only concern that I have with it is the, I know one of the, I miss luck with script, if I'm wrong, one of the ideas behind this was to let parents know what houses are hosting parties. And we talked about the last meeting, about publicizing what houses were violations. My only concern with that is, I don't think anything should be made public, especially on a civil infraction, until it, they either did not appeal, or the applicable appeal has run. I don't think we should be posting people's names until they had a full due process under the law. That'd be my only concern, but I think the ordinance otherwise is great.
So, we have a public log. Juveniles are excluded from the public log, they're not subject to public records law. If we respond to a home, if I responded to your home today, your name gets attached to it, it's a public log, I can't, I can't hide that, I can't sanitize it. If we, now, if the newspaper picks up on it, that doesn't mean you're charged, but we, you know, we could've responded for underage drinking party to your home. You know, that's up to the newspaper, if they choose to put that in. I don't know why they would, because no action was taken.
They indicated they wouldn't, but I know, I think CIT was gonna have a log, so we could let, we discussed, last time you were here, you discussed somehow publicizing what houses, we just wanna make sure that's not done by the town, from a liability standpoint, until the appeal period had run.
Right. So, that was an option. So, I know there's some towns within our cohort for the drug grants, that they do publicize that. That's an option to us. I don't think that that's necessarily, because we're a government agency, that we really wanted to go down that road necessarily. I'm optimistic that, so youth are gonna be excluded from that again. But they use it as an opportunity to let parents know where the party houses are. I think that's what we talked about, that if there was some sort of list that was published through the transcript, or otherwise, that a parent who might not previously asked those questions would say, oh, I'm not gonna now go to, chief, I'm not, my kid go to Murphy's house, because things have happened in the past week or so.
Right.
That's an option.
So, from the police departments, and we don't have any plans to do what you said, we don't have the capabilities either. We just log things as they happen. I'm not aware of that, and I don't think we have plans to do that.
I think otherwise, it's a great statute, or ordinance. Any other board members? Mr. O'Larry.
Some of the concerns I raised at the last meeting was, you know, isn't this a bit redundant? I mean, hosting parties for underage children is already illegal.
So, allowing or furnishing alcohol to a minor is illegal.
Right.
The criminal statute is difficult to prove, and, hear me out, and I'm not looking to undercut the criminal statute, but we've brought cases forward to court. The juveniles have fifth amendment privileges, they're not going to testify, certainly the person's not testifying against themselves. So, in the big scheme of things, we have never charged somebody that was hosting actions that we did charge once, and essentially, the whole case got dismissed. Again, this is not, we're not trying to use this as an enforcement tool. We're trying to take this and use it as an educational tool. If enforcement happens, it happens, but we, it's difficult to take the Massachusetts criminal statute, 'cause there's subsections, there's all sorts of things, and it, you know, for us to go out and educate the community that this is not a safe way for kids to have fun, 'cause, to be honest with you, that's what's happening with us, is we have parents that think, this is the best place for them, to be in my own home, or I'm gonna rent a limo for them for the night, and rent a hotel room for them. You know, that's what we're trying to get, you know, educate the parents on, that it's not a safe thing, 'cause there's so many tragedies that we can point to, not only in this community, but in other communities, where those things have gone bad.
Why wouldn't you attempt to enforce the current statutes more often, which should send the same message, obviously? Again, even if it could, they win in court for some reason or another. I mean, I just think, my kid's not that far removed from, you know, high school, less than 10 years, anyway. You know, we try to pay pretty good attention, as most parents would, as to, you know, where they should be, where they shouldn't be, where are you going, those sorts of things. You know, my wife and I had a pretty good idea as to which households to make sure our kids avoid it, weren't allowed to go, you know? Pick up the phone, call the parents, who's gonna be there, those sorts of things, which my kids hated, but it's okay, you know? I'm not their best friend. But, see, I'm just trying to get my head around the redundancy of all of this. I mean, we're looking to have a civil penalty for something that's already illegal, not allowed, and, you know, I'm sure someone's gonna cut a check for a hundred or $300, you know, and either admit to it, and don't wanna fight it, or fight it anyway, you know, which we still have to, 'cause the police department and the community enforce, and have legal counsel, and police officers to go and state the case. I just, and again, don't misunderstand my, I like the idea, the concept, the whole thing, however, I just see it as a redundancy, and maybe a lack of willingness to use the current statutes to the fullest degree. And again, to me, if someone's being charged criminally, and again, we see it on the news, at least a couple times this summertime, you know, particularly around graduation time, you see it in other communities, and where someone's been prosecuted, a parent has been prosecuted for hosting a party for underage kids, they're charging, you know, I think that's a pretty good deterrent, whereby if the local law enforcement is really taking it to that level, doesn't that send the same message?
So, the mass criminal laws don't have a social host law. What they have is laws that essentially prohibit an adult from giving alcohol to a minor, or allowing it on the premises.
Yeah.
But again, I guess, yes, it is on the books, but we looked at the data that we saw here, and it's, we have charged, so just so you know, this is not something we're not, we don't necessarily charge--
No, I'm aware--
--the homeowner, but we've charged the kids, we've put them into diversion programs, we're doing that end of it. But the data's showing that it's not working as well as, as it, I shouldn't say, the numbers aren't coming down as much as we would like them, they're actually going up. So, what we need to do is take another step, and that's all this is, is what else can we do to help minimize and maybe bring those numbers down? That's all this is. So, this did not come from the police department.
I guess my question, chief, is, is do you anticipate the level of activity that's currently being engaged by the police department to increase, decrease, or remain the same? It's just a question of what you're, whether you're gonna charge them criminally or not, currently. Either you're gonna charge them criminally, or you're not. And if you're not, if you've decided not to, I guess it's less publicized, but I guess the message is still the same. The message is still the same. So, it's you saying, okay, I'm looking for another, you know, tool in the toolbox here to civilly charge someone, property owner, whoever it's gonna be, for something that's already illegal, and maybe we're cutting them a little bit of a break now, because of criminal statutes, a little bit more difficult to fully enforce. But to me, there's still a redundancy to this whole thing, and you're adding another layer at the local level, on a law that's already on the books, that says, again, what do you call it, social host, or anybody else, it's illegal to provide alcohol to a minor.
Yeah, so--
So, again, my question is, is, you know, do you anticipate, how do you anticipate your department's reaction to be any different than what it already is?
I'm hoping that, like I said, I think it's on the front end of it, not on the back end of it. The front end of it, using this as a tool for us to continue to go out, very much like I just gave out an overview. That's something we can post on our social media, get it out to the schools. The more it's in front of people, maybe the more it's gonna remind them that, okay, maybe the party that we're having this weekend, I gotta check a little bit more. It's not about, for us, it's not about prosecution at this point, because we can go charge everybody, but at the end of the day, you're not gonna know who I'm charging, because it's juvenile, so--
Oh, it's a pretty small town. You know, we do, again, we know--
That's an informal way, but I'm saying is that, so what message is that sending to the rest of the community? Because it's the rest of the community that we're trying to, essentially, we want all, we're trying to get SAT involved, we're trying to get as many groups as we can to essentially minimize the amount of--
I know, but what you're saying is, we need another statute, to be enforced at the local level, on something that's already enforceable, and it just, it's, it's telling me that, you know, we're not doing it to the degree that we should be now. I mean--
Mr. O'Larry, I think the message, if I could, chief, 'cause I think the message that you're saying, and make sure I even understand it, is, this isn't about whether it's, it isn't about the legal part of it, it's about the safety part of it. And I think the numbers that you saw tonight actually tell you that story. And I think what CIT was trying to accomplish here was, okay, it's that whole definition and sanity, doing the same thing over and over, and expecting a different result. They're trying to do something different, and I think the social host bylaw gives another level of safety, awareness that actually creates safety, just like we did with plowing the sidewalks. It's the law, they gotta ply the sidewalks, but look what we did, and look at what we went through over sidewalks, and here we are, talking about a social host bylaw, and we're actually questioning it. I don't understand why we would do that, when we're talking about young adults here, and children. I think that's the key, is the word "safety," not "legal." I'm gonna let the chief respond, and then I'm gonna add--
She's gonna bite me if I don't--
Go ahead.
But, so, the other, the other thing, too, is what this bylaw does include is illegal drugs, which the chapter 138 does not, that's alcohol only. So, this is essentially allowing illegal drugs on the premises to be used, and unfortunately, that's where we are today as well. So, I just wanted to add that.
Mrs. Mullen, I'm gonna have, Mr. Schultz, and then we're gonna try to--
Miss Mullen.
Miss Mullen, sorry.
Miss Mullen, okay. I think what we're trying to also say, besides this policy here, is we're trying to educate, and we're not afraid, especially in the community impact team, and Bob's, you've been on it for a long time, too. We're trying to educate the public, and we cannot do it through just the schools, it doesn't matter, but I think Amy used a very good word when she said, we are trying to change the culture, and we're not gonna, we're being very blunt, we're trying to change the culture, we're trying to take the parents and change the mentality of the parents and the children. We're dealing in North Reading also with ignorance of parents that don't understand this is going on, and you can tell by looking at some of the numbers. We're talking about the generational gap, that it has changed so much in the past few years, that there's a huge difference from when we were kids. The parents that don't understand what's going on, and it used to be, like you said, your parents would say, you're not going to that house, it's every house now. The naivety of parents, and the single parents in town, and it's a rich town. It's a very rich town, that the poorest kid can go to the richest house for any one of these parties. When you look at parties now, and you only have to understand this part now, that for over 55 years in North Reading, that the high school was around, the Rotary had that party, that overnight party. Three years ago, it went from 36 kids showed up to the party, which means that out of a class of over 200, 180 parents of kids in high school said to their children, as opposed to the Rotary sponsoring a very safe environment for you to go to the, after graduation, to this party, 36 parents said to their kids, you go. The other 190 parents said, you can go to individual parties, because the kids knew that you can't get drugs and alcohol in. The second year after that, the school said, let's send something to the parents, and let them know, 'cause the Rotary wanted this to continue. The next year, it dropped to 18. It is now canceled. So, if you need no other, no other explanation of the parents in town that allowed the kids to go to other parties where there's drinking and drugs and alcohol, you go to a sweet 16 party at some parent's house, you go to a graduation, you go to a prom, and you go to high school parties. Things that happened afterwards, that the kids came back to the parent's house with their families, doesn't happen anymore. So, if you think there's any parent in this room, any parent in North Reading, that can handle 100 kids, 80 kids at their house, before every prom, there have to be 40 parties going on in town, that the kids show up before, when you wonder where they all get alcohol and whatever, whether they get it from friends and their car, they're not getting it, the parents aren't serving it, or knowing they're serving it, but the kids are getting it somewhere. So, every parent can't watch 80 to 100 kids. So, I go back to saying the naivety of the parents, I think it's a great policy, because what this does do now, and I've had parties at my house, and I'm one of the few parents that calls other parents and say, who's gonna be there? Are there enough chaperones? After a while, my kids weren't allowed to get invited to the parties, because the parents told the kids, don't invite them, because my kids are gonna, you know, can't go, or they're gonna go and tell the mother that what's going on, which didn't happen, I'm just a pretty shocked mother. But, so, I said, when you, like, again, you only have to think about, how many of you went to graduation parties, and you saw kids drinking at the parties, and know that young kids, high school graduates, are walking around with that red cup in their hand? So, like I said, if you really believe that it's, if we put this out here, we're trying to say to those parents that really might be naive, guys, there's a social host thing, and if your kid goes, or if the kid's empty house, you better understand that you're gonna be, be maybe in a little bit of trouble if it happens.
Thank you, Ms. Mullen. Real brief, chief, I think by making this a civil violation, it's gonna be much easier for you on the enforcement side, than we'll be trying to prosecute a criminal offense. So, I think, and that's, I know you're not looking to put this in to enforce it, but if you do have to enforce it, it's gonna be a hell of a lot easier with a clerk magistrate's hearing than it is, you know, a jury trial. So, I wanna point that out, different standards of proof.
Any more discussions? I mean, we discuss it more when we go to the-- I'm sorry. Please go to the podium, if you wouldn't mind, right up there, and just state your name and address.
Diane Downing, Dwayne Drive, North Reading. I couldn't agree more that it's more of an education of the parents who haven't learned yet how dangerous it can be. Something I used to do and it worked, I don't even know if they think about it, and that is, first of all, I communicate with the kids and I say, if you're anyplace and it escalates and you're uncomfortable, call me. I don't care where it is, what time of day, the wee hours of the morning, I will come and I'll not punish you for whatever was going on, but I will be there. It worked. I had gotten a call with a party, it doesn't matter where. My daughter called me and I zoomed over, drove up front, there were teenagers sprawled out in the lawn drunk. She came out and people were saying to her, who's that? She said, it's my mother. And it was, your mother? And she had kids asking if they could come into the car and I, and have me drive them home. My son did the same thing. I picked her up out front, he said, just pick me up down the street. He was humiliated and I did. And anyway, I, so I couldn't agree more with the culture and the parents really getting their parents' attention. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Any other questions on that? We can discuss this more when we get to the warrant article discussion as well. But I want to thank you both for coming in tonight, taking your time away from your families to be here to continue to educate us on this as we prepare for town meeting. So we are at the hour, we have a public hearing, so I'm going to have us move over to that. And if I could ask the folks that are here for the public hearing, and have them sit up front here, if they want to be recognized associated with the property, we're going to be discussing. Thank you.
Do you have the public?
No, we did the reopen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you chair this?
Okay. Need to map the parcel number, information on top of the motion, just the information.
Bobby, Bobby, yeah, you said, this is just, this is for the public hearing.
Just so you can hear a little bit better.
Mr. McCormick.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, so we're going to reopen the public hearing associated with map 42 parcel 126 8 Devon's Road.
First, just a note for the folks that are in the hallway, there are some seats in the front here and there's also some seating along the wall to my left or your right if you want to.
And there's a bench behind you as well.
There's also a bench behind me, yes.
Yep, there's a bench right up behind the town administrator as well with plenty of room. Okay, please.
Thank you. So as a follow-up to the board's discussion at the last meeting on August 21st, the board had expressed an interest in going through a request for proposals process relative to the potential disposition of the property located at 8 Devon's Road. The property is town-owned land, it's adjacent to another privately owned parcel with a residence on it and it abuts some other undeveloped land in the neighborhood as well. Generally, when the board has disposed of property, it has taken advantage of the statute that allows the board to dispose of property taken by a tax title foreclosure through a public auction, which is normally how we, how we dispose of property. In this instance, it's a bit more complicated because of the number of different scenarios that could play out relative to the abutting properties and the board had expressed an interest in going forward with an RFP. So after the meeting and after the board's discussion, we consulted with town council and in order for the town to dispose of this property through an RFP, we would need to obtain, seek and obtain authority from town meeting to dispose of the property. So therefore, the draft warrant for the October town meeting includes an article that would authorize the board to dispose by request for proposals consistent with the state law this parcel. The board's options at this point are a couple, as far as I can tell. The first would be to continue down the path of the RFP by going to town meeting. And the second would be if it chooses not to go towards a town meeting approach, dispose of the property by auction by following the restrictions. If it's going to be the former, my recommendation would be to continue this hearing until after the town meeting in the event that the town meeting does not give the authority and the board wishes to dispose of the property through the auction process. And then, of course, the other alternative would be to, to issue the restrictions and send the property out to auction tonight without going to the RFP. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. O'Leary.
I'm for going to town meeting and RFP.
Short and to the point.
Any other board members?
I, I agree with you. I think, you know, based on what we know in this particular parcel and the potential scenarios that could develop from this particular parcel, I am definitely in favor of doing that. I know we want to try to, we have some goals in mind when we set out forward to get rid of some town-owned land and, you know, we, not that I don't like to see people have an opportunity to grow and develop, but in this particular case, if we could try to protect a home or try to help a home have a quality of life, improved quality of life, I'd rather go through town meeting and go through the process to make sure that we can continue to, to help our neighbors and make sure we can give you an opportunity to have the quality of life they need to stay there long-term. So I'm in favor of that as well. So the warrant article, I believe, is in the packet tonight.
That's correct.
And we can discuss it again at that time. So the recommendation is that we would extend this public hearing again until after?
Yes.
Town meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And then we can close it afterwards if we get the correct action at town meeting.
That's correct. And my recommendation would be to extend the, the hearing to Monday, October 16th at 8:00 PM. Vote to continue the hearing until that time and date.
8:00 PM. Okay. Any more questions?
No, so moved.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, you need a second.
Second.
Okay, oh, you're going to make the motion?
Go right ahead. We ready?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move to continue this hearing to October 16th, 2017 at 8:00 PM.
Second by Mr. O'Leary. Any more discussion? None heard, all those in favor? Aye.
So you may just want to explain to Mr. McCormick?
Yep.
About exactly what's, what just occurred.
So the step we're going to take is we're going to actually create a warrant article October town meeting that's going to give us, we're going to request the town to give us the authority to, to issue an RFP for this property. And we're going to mandate the restrictions of how we want to sell this property. Because if we use the town-owned land process that's currently in place, we have to see, we get higher bids, then we won't have the controls to be able to make the decision and we would have to release it to whomever, basically the highest bid. We wouldn't have the controls to dictate who we want to give to. The only way we could do that is through our RFP because we can create the standards of how we want to sell the property in the RFP. Any more of that? Oh, request for proposal, apologize.
Well, because I think what, what we were trying to do originally was impose specific restrictions on the development of the lots, but they may have what's considered grandfathered status to be able to be developed. And so we're opting to go the route of seeking the request for proposals from potential purchasers, which is pretty much so far, we only know the two of you, our interest here for specific purposes, to be able to maintain those restrictions as have customarily been done by this board in the past on parcels of town land that's been sold.
But based on the knowledge we have of the location that we're discussing, we, we think it is the right thing to do to make sure that we take this opportunity to protect the people that live there and give them the opportunity to have the long-term health to live in that, and then live in their homes. And that's what we're trying to accomplish here. It's not because we want to take away an opportunity from anyone else. That's 100% what we're trying to do here. Okay? So that's, that's what we're going to do, we're going to move on to the next public hearing, which is, or actually not a public hearing, we're going to amend the vote on August 21st of the 2017 map 26 parcel 77, 17 R Francis Street. We did not put a, go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we did have a motion in there that was secondary to the board's actions relative to continuing the hearing, which would call for the board to place the article on the warrant. If you'd like to take that up during the discussion of the warrant, we can take it up then. But I just point us back to that.
I would like to do that during the warrant.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. But we don't, we don't have a public hearing for this next one. It's, it's just an amendment we're going to take.
That's correct, yes. So with regard to the next parcel, the parcel located 17 R Francis Street, when the board voted to put the property out to auction with restrictions, we did not include a minimum bid price. And just to give the board the background, we've included the minimum bid price as a means to capture the costs associated with town council facilitating the transaction and for no other purpose. So with regard to the transaction, the number that we've been provided is $1,750, the total cost we can expect to incur relative to town council. And then the winning bidder pays that amount plus any other associated fees or costs associated with it. So there's an advertising fee that we pay the newspaper, there's a recording fee with the registry as well. They, the winning bidder pays $1,750 plus those costs. And so there's a motion in there that would correct this and we've included the board's previous motion as a reference point as well to, if the board wishes to mimic the restrictions that were in place.
Okay. Any discussion on the board?
Before we entertain the motion, what, just to recall, what, 1 through 4, which items did we want to include on this one?
So the restrictions that we were, were included in the last discussion was that the property would not be used in and of itself as a separate building lot, premises shall not be used to satisfy minimum zoning or health code requirements, no building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises. And I'm summarizing, obviously, and the fourth was to waive the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter 48, which is a grandfathering requirement. Those are the four restrictions that were placed.
I thought, didn't we waive number three?
Did, what, the structures?
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't agree.
So there are two that relate to the structures and I'm just going to go back to the template for just a moment. There are two, two restrictions that we've considered regarding the disposition of property. One requires that the property be conjoined with other parcels and one restricts it from any construction altogether. The board opted to include the restriction that requires it to be conjoined with other parcels for a structure to be built on it and not the one that restricts the construction altogether. So there are five total options, the one that we dropped was the one that was the overall prohibition on construction.
Which was number three, right?
Uh, it's number four. We elected to go with number three. So out of the list of five, we went with one, two, three, and five.
One, two, three, five.
That was, that was five out of.
Yeah.
Okay, now it's four.
So you have that?
Yep.
You don't have four, right?
Well, our number four was number five last.
Okay, that's the confusion.
Oh, I think that's.
Got it. I will take a motion.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the vote of August 21, 2017, to sell by auction town-owned land designated as map 26 parcel 77, located at 17 R Francis Street in accordance with MGL chapter 60, subject 77B, to reflect the minimum bid price in the amount of $1,750 to cover legal fees, buyer to pay all other fees. Costs and expenses associated with the conveyance subject to the following restrictions. One, not to be used in and of itself as a separate building lot. Number two, the premises shall not be used to satisfy minimum zoning or health code requirements for the construction on or use of any building or adjoining land. Three, no building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises unless the premises is combined with adjoining and said adjoining land already meets the minimum requirements for the town of North Reading for a separate building lot. And number four, to waive provisions of MGL chapter 48, section 6 pursuant to its ninth paragraph.
And we need a dollar amount?
Include it.
It's in the motion, Mr. Chairman. Uh, 1,750.
Plus fees.
Any, plus fees.
Plus fees, okay, thank you.
Okay. And I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. O'Leary, any more discussion? None being heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay. I'm not going to go back to the purchase and sale yet, we'll, we'll just continue on. We're going to get to the subject at hand tonight, which is the update on the MWRA in Reading Andover water discussion. And I'd like to turn it over to town administrator, Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Messari to lead the discussion for us.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through the presentation I made the other night.
Sure.
But I'm not going to go through all the verbiage.
Okay.
But what I've done is, as you're well aware, we met with Andover after our meeting and we came to agreement on some changes that the board was looking for. So I've highlighted those in red and when we get to them, I'll speak to them.
That's great, thank you.
So, excuse me, before we start, Mr. Chairman, maybe if we want to acknowledge the representatives from Andover who were here and we spent most of our summer with. Chairman Slaff, if you want to introduce the rest of your crew or Andrew if you'd like.
I'm Paul Slaff, the chairman, the chairman of the board, chairman of the board's faculty in Andover. Right, our town manager is planning it and a group of professionals here who, and I felt really conflicted about bringing all these people here because I didn't want to kind of overwhelm you, but let me tell you what the reason is. I sit in those chairs all the time and I find it very respectful when people come to our board prepared, people come to our board prepared and with, ready to answer all the questions, professionals. So I made a judgment call speaking with my, my town manager that it was better to bring these professionals, anybody, than, just in case you had a question. You may not have questions, you may have questions, but I thought it might be something that you would at least avail yourself if you had.
No, more is better right now.
Well, exactly. This is very technical and as, as Mr. O'Leary said, you know, we spent a better part of the summer together working this out and I found it to be very stimulating and I found it to be very, I think that, that this could be very, very beneficial to have a partnership, continuing partnership with both communities. I think we worked very hard to try to get to that point, try to get to a yes point. And I didn't want to come here tonight and I wanted to give you the respect of at least having people here to answer the questions. So that's why we're all here and please avail yourself of all this expensive talent we have here, so.
Much appreciated. Thank you. Mr. Messari will turn it over to you now.
So for those that haven't, didn't see the presentation at our last meeting, I'm not going to go read through everything. I'll leave these up for a matter of a few seconds if somebody has a question related to it, through the chair.
Through the chair, please.
We'll answer it. So this is basically last week, we, we sat here and we outlined kind of why, why are we discussing this? And I'll go on from here. So the objectives for tonight, I'll go through it again, and I just modified the second item, and that was to determine if Andover's voted and approved proposal is worthy of consideration. A week ago, it read basically Andover's proposal. What's changed? The only thing on this page has changed is we've had another meeting with Andover, so we're up to 11, if I have to count right. I'll leave it up for a few seconds.
Mr. Messari, if I could ask a favor?
Yes.
If you can maybe drag the mic a little closer to you.
Oh, sure. Thank you, Michael.
Folks in the, in the crowd could hear you a little bit better with the speakers in the.
Is that better?
Thank you. Yeah, is that better, folks?
Okay.
Thank you.
So in the summary of the proposed Andover agreement, and this is on two slides, and the board members, the updated document is in Dropbox.
Yep.
And I've summarized, so what's in the.
We're not going to hold it to it.
Actual agreement has more words than what's on here. But basically, the changes are, that one was that Andover will reverse, reverse, reimburse North Reading for costs already incurred up to $953,000 beginning in July 1 of 2018. North Reading for costs already incurred up to $953,000, beginning in July 1 of 2018, in the amount of $95,300 per fiscal year.
For 10 years.
For, for a 10-year period. And 2nd was an issue that was questioned by board members, and that was the termination right, either party 5 years prior notice, existing party to pay 5 years revenue, and that's been removed now from the agreement.
Now, if we're going to build a true partnership, then we should all be willing to, to take, right? We appreciate your understanding of that. Thank you.
And, and going on, this is a continuation of the summary of the agreement, work with North Reading to extend feasible, to the extent feasible, to be an emergency backup water supply to the town of Reading through the North Reading Water Infrastructure. This was added, wasn't in the previous presentation.
And that's much appreciated.
And it was agreed to by the town of Andover. And in the interim agreement, extend the rate of 5% for FY 2019. That would be July 1 of 2018. And 0% for FY 2020, and then go to 2.5% for FY 2001. And that's if we haven't come to a long-term agreement. And if we did, has reached, then the rate goes to 95% of the Andover's T1, Tier 1 rate at the beginning of the fiscal year the agreement is signed.
So, let me just make sure folks in the crowd and at home understand this. We currently have an interim agreement between the 2 towns that ends in June 2019.
Correct.
And this extends that existing agreement another 2 years to allow us to...
Up to 2 years.
Up to 2 years, to allow us to complete the integration of this new agreement and to do all the infrastructure tie-ins and everything else we need to do to increase up to 3 million gallons a day.
Just a minute, Mr. Chairman. Actually, this particular segment is, Andover is willing to, and again, for our considering their proposal...
Yep.
They recognize that, you know, we have the time of the MWRA and a time schedule which is pretty tight right now, whereby if we agreed to take a look at their proposal and seriously consider it, it would delay our construction down in Reading for their infrastructure and delay our tying with the MWRA, which was scheduled for July 1, 2019. In recognition of that, they have agreed to extend the current agreement for 2, 2 1-year periods, so basically 2 years. And we currently have an agreement that calls for 5% increase annually. What they've agreed to do is, since they've already set their rates through that time period, is that for the first year, it would be a 0% increase and maximum 2.5%. So, even if we continue to go the MWRA route, chances are it's going to go into, at least this fiscal year 2019, we would experience a 0% increase above whatever the rate's going to be at the end of fiscal year 18. So, this is their, one of their fiscal offerings to assist us, even if we decide to continue on with the MWRA, to minimize our exposure and costs in consideration for taking a look at the terms and conditions that they've offered us. So, they recognize that it's going to be a delay in order for us to consider their proposal. They're economically favorably offering us some terms to the extension periods at a lesser rate than what we've already agreed to.
Thank you for explaining that. Kate?
Quick question on this. One of the issues we talked about at our last meetings are these real numbers. We had charts and graphs and rates and everything else like that, matched them up to MWRA to Andover. So, what I was wondering about is, in the terms of this, the way I read it, it will be a 99-year, at least this proposal that was voted on, they'll, it'll be 95% of Andover's Tier 1 rate, and then it says not to exceed 2.5 for a period of 10 years. Are we getting the 95% of the Tier 1 rate for the whole 99-year duration?
That is definitely the intent.
Yes, and then, and the thing is, but that, 95% of the Tier 1 Andover rate is when we enter, enter into a long-term agreement with Andover.
Right.
In the event that we don't enter into a not, a long-term contract with Andover, this proposed, this will be the rate schedule and would take us through the construction phase of the MWRA. So, you've got 3 different things happening, basically. You know, the interim period, as we're considering, and the delay that that's going to cause, the rates, what the rates will be established at, should we decide after consideration to remain on course with the MWRA. And the third one is, if we take the time, consider their, their proposal, and agree to their proposal, then it ratchets down to the 95% of the Andover Tier 1 rate. So, basically, 3 things going on here, addressing the 3 different scenarios that can take place over a short period of time.
Any other questions before I change the slide?
Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just through to make sure it's clear to folks.
Go ahead.
The current agreement that we're in with Andover right now expires at the end of fiscal year 2019, and includes annual increases of 5%. The extension term fiscal year 2020 and 2021 have water rate increases, well, purchase of water rate increases of 0% and 2.5% respectfully, respectively, excuse me. I just want to make sure that that's clear to folks.
But it would be anticipated that if, and again, I'm anticipating that if the board moves forward with accepting a concept, the idea of continuing to negotiate with Andover, that these rates probably won't ever go into effect unless we don't go with Andover. That's when they would go into effect.
Thank you. Mr. Shul.
Just a question, Mr. Slav, how long, I know we would have to, you guys would have to get approval to take an extra whatever out of the Meramec for us. How long do you estimate that process to take, and what do you think the chances of success are?
We have...
And if you could, wouldn't mind using the podium to have your responses, just state your names. We have, we have about 100,000 people at home watching, so...
We wish.
Way out.
So, um...
Toby, you want to identify yourself?
Oh, yes, I apologize. Toby Feder, Vice President with Woodard and currently a consultant for the town of Andover. So, basically, there are 2 different permits that we're going to need to modify. The first is the Water Management Act that allows us to remove water from the Meramec River. It's boosted into the, into the pond adjacent to the town of Andover's treatment plant. So, we'll need to expand that in order to fully supply both communities over the 30-year I would say if it were in any other drainage basin other than the Meramec, that might be a very tall lift, but with the Meramec, there's a, for, for all intents and purposes from a water supply standpoint, effectively inexhaustible amount of water available. So, from that standpoint, permitting is never, never an exact science, but, you know, the, the folks that we've spoken to at the state and our internal permitting managers think it's maybe a year to a year and a half in order to basically fully, fully update all of the WA, WMA, which is Water Management Act permits. Now, there's a secondary permit, which will also need to be modified, which is called the Interbasin Transfer Permit. I know that that's another permit we would just need to, to apply for. Again, I'm not a permitting expert per se, but the permitting experts that we work with indicate that that's very much a procedural indication that's really intended to identify the amount of transfer capacity. And in reality, right now, that permit's set at a million and a half, a million and a half gallons per day. The actual transfer capacity of the pipelines currently in the ground is significantly above that. It's just that, you know, we never modeled them in the beginning to identify the amount that should have gone on the original Interbasin Transfer Permit.
If I could just follow up on that, as the Meramec is sourced in New Hampshire, are there any multi-state or federal issues we have to deal with, being that the river runs through 2 states?
Uh, no.
Okay.
It's basically, it's all Massachusetts permitting.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if we, we might want to call out our consultant, Rob Williamson, in order to verify or further explain.
Back to back, there's a, a written report from Wright Pierce.
And I appreciate it. It was one of the things that I had asked for in addition to a few other things, but this is one of them, and I appreciate, I did read your report, but it would be helpful if you could just give a summary of your report to us and the long-term health of the...
Sure. My name is Rob Williamson. I'm a Senior Project Manager with Wright Pierce. We represent the, the town of North Reading. So, I would agree with Toby that, that the Meramec, there shouldn't, there will not be any interstate issues that you have to deal with. Everything will be in Massachusetts. And I would also concur that, you know, the Meramec and the Meramec River Basin, you could call it almost an infinite, infinite supply. There are a number of communities in both Maine, not Maine, New Hampshire, and Mass that use the Meramec as a water supply, but those withdrawals are infinitesimally small compared to what the volume that flows along the river. So, there, there should never be any long-term issues for you, this community, other communities, far, far, far into the future.
And as far as the timelines associated with permitting, you concur?
Um, I do, yeah. It's about that long. Permitting, like Toby said, is, it's, you never know what direction it's going to go.
So, you mean spelled to 18 months is a fair assessment?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Denucci.
Did you, I didn't get to read it, but did you form an opinion, or do you concur that Andover's infrastructure can transfer up to 3 million gallons a day to North Reading?
We have not done an exhaustive technical analysis of that. We have not had the opportunity to look at their hydraulic model or anything of that nature. We're taking their word that they can push that much water through. I know Mark is, the Water Superintendent for you folks, has done a flow test out there and can confirm that, that the quantity of water that you're looking to deal with can be pushed through, and I think Andover and their consultants have confirmed that even today, they can give you the maximum that you're seeking in short-term spurts until they make some minor, some modifications to their system. But if you do move forward, this is what we will be doing for you, was looking at their system in detail, just to, to make sure and give you that comfort, and it has to be done as part of the permitting effort.
That's part of our decision this evening, to make a determination if we want to, and that's why Mr. O'Larry explained to you the extension here with the IMA. We want to now go to town meeting to get approval, to get some engineering money to make sure that we can physically do this. Then we'll have all the answers to those questions. That's part of...
And it's absolutely necessary for the permitting.
We need, right, we need it for the permitting, so, yes, Kate.
Just one more quick question while you're there, while Toby's there.
I'll come back.
When, um, when you're mentioning these 2 particular permits that we knew we would have to apply for, and I think you mentioned 30 years, how often do we have to reapply or get recertified for both of those? Do you know?
The Interbasin Transfer, you don't ever have to recertify. The, the Water Management Act permit is also, it's, I believe, reissued every 7 years, but it's, there, there's not a re-permitting effort associated with the reissuance.
Okay.
Unless we change that gallons request, right?
That, or they change the rules on occasion, so you have to address that.
So, they're really, you wouldn't see an issue because once we apply for the first time for this shift of capacity, which is really what it is, then we would just be reapplying for that same amount, you know, every 7 years? I think you said you don't see an issue with that over the 99-year timeframe, provided that none...
Not in our experience, no.
Okay.
No. Obviously, we cannot predict out legislative or regulatory actions 99 years in the future. That's true of the entire state over, so...
Yeah, okay.
And Mr. Shul.
Assuming, arguing that we have the permitting part worked out, and this is kind of a loaded question, I realize this, and if you can't answer, that's fine too. How long would it take us to actually turn the faucet on? If we started today?
Oh, I, I think you could probably turn the faucet on right now, and effectively supply all of North Reading from the information that I've seen. I know we did a flow test, basically at the town line, maybe 3 or 4 months ago, Chris, I believe.
I believe it was a little longer than that.
Okay.
Over the last 12 months.
But, but I believe that on, on the primary supply main that currently supplies North Reading from the Andover system, I think we flowed somewhere to the tune of 2.5 million gallons instantaneous flow, with dropping only 2 PSI on the pressure of the main line, which indicates that there is a lot more water there available, especially in light of the fact that, that the hydraulic grade line in the town of North Reading is, meaning the pressure at which the pipe, is, the pressure of the water in the pipe, significantly lower in North Reading. Which means if we opened up the valve that there, that is there right now, we probably could transfer quite a bit more than, than that number.
Let me, let me couch that, that technically and physically, that is true, but to do it regulatorily, it's going to take some time.
What would you guesstimate that timeframe would be?
Year plus, just to be safe, on the safe side.
And that would something we wouldn't do throughout, we had the permitting.
Turn, you mean, turn the, open it up?
Yeah.
Yes, unless there's, unless it's an emergency. You already have an, an established connection, so there's some leeway that the regulators will give you if there was ever an issue. But to turn it up and physically shut your wells off and start taking all your water from there, you want to go through the permitting and get those approvals.
We've got to finish the piece of bill in a second.
Yeah. So, we were talking about this earlier today, that, you know, perhaps if everything went smoothly, and again, I say that because going through the permitting process is rarely smooth, you could very potentially be in a position to open that valve at your established goal of July 1, 2019. Very good potential that that could happen.
Any other questions?
We don't have any questions. We're all...
You got two?
I have a few questions. Well, I just have, I'd say 2 things, because, you know, I know, and we have a lot of people here from, as you can see, the public, very interested in this. You know, at last meeting, you may have watched it, you may have went back and watched on YouTube, it's very popular, it's got a lot of hits, but there was a lot of frustration. I mean, you can understand, you, we've been doing this for a long time, we've been trying to deal with this subject for a long time, so hope you can understand our frustration. But I think if you can put all that aside, you could see we've come to a, a solution that I think is something now that, we're left with a very, just, you know, I think we can make a decision relatively easy now. Where before, we really only were down 1 path, and we didn't have a choice. And I hope the public can appreciate the fact that, you know, some of the frustration that you may have seen even on me, was just for the fact that we didn't have. By, by you going out and voting last week, I want to thank you for it, because until you do that, all the discussion is just discussion. Now, we finally have something tangible to work with, and I'm looking forward to us having a motion tonight and discussion on what we want to do going forward. So, I want to turn it over to, yes, sir.
Can I just say, let me just say that I completely understand where you're coming from, because you owe your citizens, just like I owe my citizens, a complete, you don't even need to turn over...
Microphone?
I'm sorry. I tell people, do they go to the microphone all the time when I don't do it myself? You need to turn over every rock. You need to look at, you owe them that. You raised your hand, you said you would do what's, what's best for your community, and by doing that, sometimes we get frustrated, sometimes we get, you know, we, we're searching for answers, but it is important. This is a huge discussion, decision for your town, and it's a huge decision for our town. We want to make sure that our partnership is 99 years of smiling and, and, and being able to give you the quality and the quantity of water that you need for all that amount of time. In order for you to do that, you need to turn over every rock, and so, never, I'd never apologize for, for digging into the details and trying to get...
This wasn't about really turning over the rocks, though. It was really about having something tangible, because we already had gone down a path. Town meeting had already granted us approval to go in a direction, and we have to honor that commitment, and we were on a timeline, and we're, we're still on that timeline, and we owe it to the MWRA, and I want to thank them, because they've been very patient in this process. Reading has put it together a lot, they put a lot of energy and a lot of money, a lot of time and respect to this town to try to help us. A lot of people burned some political capital for us to be where we are with the MWRA situation, because we felt that that really was the only opportunity we had, based on the letter we received back in 2014 from Andover. So, I want to make sure the public is understanding this. This isn't something that we, you know, we're just going MWRA because we all want to go that way. It was what we had in front of us, that was the decision that was made at town meeting. And if we want to vector off of that, we needed you to take that vote the other night. And that's why we had so much frustration at our last meeting, because we expected it at that meeting. But it was great that you were able to turn around so quickly, and we're here tonight, and I think we have a nice opportunity to have another discussion, we can get a motion motion on the table and have another discussion, and we'll see where the board wants to go with it.
Well, we're all here waiting.
Thank you.
Mr. Misery, yes, please. Continue.
On the summary of the proposed agreement, as you can see, I think Michael had it up there a second ago, the Andover Board of Selectmen voted last Monday on the agreement that was presented in summary form. And you can see the signatures, which they voted, and I'll move on from there. Under qualifications, we already discussed this, but right past, as our consultant has confirmed in the letter dated August 31st, 2017, I apologize for the typo, that their, that their opinion is that Meramec River has substantial capacity to provide drinking water to large population centers without the risk of significantly reducing or impacting the flows and water quality. So that was in addition to the qualifications that I presented a couple of weeks ago. The remaining challenges are basically the same. I think, you know, as we talked about, a year to eighteen months to get things done. A lot of that's related to dealing with the bureaucracy and dealing with all the people that have to make the decisions. And Steve and I and those working directly on the Science of the Water Project are going to keep the heat on to keep that moving. The pros and the, and the cons haven't changed at all. And things to consider are basically what we've talked about in the past. There is one change as a result, I reported it in the agreement, is that Andover's agreed to provide us $953,000 based on ten percent per year for ten years. And that made a change in terms of the approximate cost going with Andover versus going with MWRA. And that's exclusive of the buy-in cost. And those are the changes in the presentation. The red in here was information that we didn't have when we started the presentation two weeks ago. The curve is the curve, and, you know, clearly, you can go back to the Excel spreadsheet that Mark put together, and you can see clearly that over, over time, it amounts to millions of dollars in savings going down the Andover path. And I'll leave things with that. And I, I do thank all the Andover personnel that are here this evening for, for coming and helping to answer questions that both the board and, I haven't heard much from the public, but if they have any questions, I don't know if you want to open it up to the public, or not, Michael?
I do, but I just want to say a couple of things. You know, I think this slide here actually tells a big story. And, you know, because we've done a lot of work with the MWRA. I know I was, I certainly was bought in on it because, you know, that was the path we were on. But when you look at these numbers and you look at, you know, because the quality that we get from Andover today is great. The town likes the water, we like the water. But we, we never thought it would be the future. And when we started going down the road, we went to town meeting two years ago, and we decided that we're going in a different direction. I was, I just came and just figured that was it, that was the end. But it was great that you came back to the table to realize that, you know, this is a good opportunity for both towns to continue to work together for the long term. And the goal, for at least myself speaking, from day one, was about picking a long-term, healthy water solution for this town. So the people that sit in this seat after us don't have to deal with this issue again. And after you're not in your seats anymore, you don't have to worry about it either. And, but we have to do it in the most efficient way and ensure the lowest risk to our community. And the MWRA was the lowest risk at the time. But I think this, and you see these numbers, you, you stop, the pros and cons, and you start factoring it all in, they're both low risk. But now, the numbers really helped me understand that, okay, one's low risk, but one's more, if I'm a fiscal responsibility to the community, it's clear to me what, we need to take the opportunity. And I'm going to vote in favor of us exploring and going through whatever actions we have to go through to make sure that it is feasible and to get that done right away. And I am going to ask the board members to join me. And I know two other board members are already, I know where you stand, and I, and I don't want to put you guys on the spot, but I think now we do, we should step back, take a minute, look at this, and make sure it is feasible, because affordability is there. But again, there's no guarantee. I don't want anyone to walk out of this room tonight thinking it's a guarantee. We still have to go through the process, because at the end of the day, it is town meeting that has to give us the authority to go and do this.
In two towns.
In both towns, that's correct. So.
And I just, I also want to say, I really appreciate your being here, and the fact that this was put to the vote makes me realize the seriousness of it. And I also think that those changes that were made between the last time we discussed it and what we're seeing today are, to me, they're, they're much more than trivial changes, and it shows that there is a commitment there that I, I appreciate. I think that was a question or a challenge that we had with all this back and forth that had gone on for the past several months. So, so I really appreciate your being here and taking a vote and basically making that commitment, you know, putting the line in the scene and making that commitment to North Reading. It, it matters to me in terms of moving forward and investigating this further. I still have a lot of unanswered questions, but at least I know moving forward, this is real and this is, you know, worthy of our reviewing in more detail. So, thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. It's, it's nice to have something tangible we can work with. And I personally, one of my sticking points was the five-year out, and I'm glad to see that, if we want something permanent, like Michael said, we, we don't want, I don't want to be sitting in a nursing home putting on cable access and seeing this debate, you know, long, long, so many years from now. Yeah. So, no, I, and the five-year out did scare me, and I'm glad we could reach a common accord on that issue.
So we're going to need the public, we're going to need the community to come and support us at town meeting when we bring this forward for discussion and to request the funds we need to complete the feasibility, to go ahead and complete the actions that we need to take to make our final determination on what path to go down. And, and so, you know, so this isn't a done deal, and I know you're going to have to get your community to support it as well. And we are, everybody in this board would be willing to come to your town meeting if you need us to, to show that we are committed together, cohesively. And we're going to make this work. So, and if there's no more questions, or if nobody from the public wants to speak, I'm going to have-
Mr. Yule?
Can I just ask a quick question?
You have to go to the podium and just state the name, and then Mr. Yule can follow up.
Excuse my ignorance, I guess, on this.
Name, please.
George Muongo, Eighteen Route Third, North Reading. I don't know what it means with ninety-nine years. Does that mean forever? Is that just another way of saying forever? Or is it really ninety-nine years?
Ninety-nine years.
That's all I-
Ninety-nine years.
And then, at ninety-nine years, we have to go through this? The town will have to go through this?
Well, you don't, I don't.
You won't have to worry about it.
Okay.
Yes.
If there's any way to make it permanent-
Well, in ninety-nine years, it's all going to be virtual anyway.
Say a fiber act of water.
Good evening, Jeff Yule, 427 Park Street. You know, I've been in, in the beginning of this, and I, I think at this point in time, hearing what I've heard, I think a lot of thank yous need to go out to everyone that has been involved. I, we go back to the beginning, and you kind of took my thunder away when you, Chairman Prisco, when you said, you know, what is our, what was our purpose? What was our, our, our need and our, our, our goal? And our goal was simply to make sure that we had enough water to supply this town, enough quality water, to keep this town running without any problems of shortages. And that has been the goal from the very beginning. And I, I give you a lot of credit, because I think you were the first one to reach out to the MWRA and, and get the ball rolling. Because I recall, when I was on the board, we, we had to make a, a term, we had to make a decision and, and take a path to, to ensure that we had water. So I thank you for that. I thank the board in going forward on this. I thank Selectmen Misery, Selectmen O'Leary for pursuing this, the ten meetings or eleven meetings, two hours each time, giving us-
Those were the short ones.
Two hours? Those were the short ones.
And I don't doubt it. Giving us an alternative, an additional alternative to what was before us. And now we have two options before us. And that, that's a rarity, to have two options to be able to make a decision on that's going to benefit the town. I think we're going to benefit one way or the other here, and that's due to the flexibility, I think, that the board is now showing towards this issue. There was a lot of concern in town that there was not flexibility, but I think it's shown that there is flexibility. I think when we look at the facts, I like to use your term, in this case, it's a no-brainer to, to consider this and to go and move forward on this, Chairman Prisco. I also want to thank Andover. Thank you for coming around and, and seeing that this was an important issue for you too. It kind of, our need was a solution for you, in the sense that it helps you maintain a customer base. If we're going, if, if it all comes into fruition, we're going to wind up having a, we're going to be your number-one customer, and we're going to have a great relationship like all towns need to have, that, abut each other, so that other things that come up, this is a, a fine example of two towns getting together, satisfying a need, and, and moving forward. So I, I thank you for that, because it was pretty contentious a little while ago, as, as we all know. But that's, that's in the past, as Rafiki would say. So I want to, you know, thank you for doing that. I also want to thank Don Kelleher for stepping up at the twenty, meeting on the 21st, and acknowledging how valuable it was for us to extend the conversations to this, to this point. And, and Marcy Bailey as well, who stood up to get the ball, have us, have you continue the conversation. So, the whole thing, I'm trying to summarize the whole thing, that you're talking about everybody working together to come up with a solution that is most advantageous in our, your case, for North Reading, and in your case, for Andover. So, I, I didn't, I wasn't sure what was going to happen tonight, to be honest with you. So, I'm glad. I think the community's going to be glad about this as we move forward. And you're right, we do have to go to town meeting and support this. If we don't do that, then all of this is for naught. So, town meeting in October is going to be, it's going to be in the October meeting, correct?
Correct.
The decision on this, the voting on this by the town.
Well, there's going to be a request for funds.
Request for funding to do the engineering-
Right, right.
To look at their system, as well as home rule petition-
Right.
-allowing the board to move forward in a certain timeframe for the ninety-nine-year agreement for the Andover.
Right, so.
But, you know, you mentioned, you know, the, you're happy that we had some willingness to have some flexibility in our discussion here tonight, or our willingness to have it, make it, to consider something else. But you have to understand that up till our last meeting, why you saw so much frustration on this board was, we didn't have it. We only had one path. We had a voted at town meeting path, town meeting funded and gave us a path to go MWRA. And that's why we pushed so hard at that last meeting, to make sure the message got set across that we need Andover to make a vote. We need to see the committed vote, and that's why we're here tonight. And, you know, I want to thank Mr. Misery and Mr. O'Leary, because, you know, those three board members you could see at our last meeting, we were pretty close, but we trusted them. They asked us three, four times, maybe even five times that night, to just give it a little more time. And that's what made us pull back on what we were going to do, because I think we sent the message strong enough that people understood where we were. Because if we were, if we didn't have that, we would be doing something different tonight. And so I really want to thank them, because it was, you know, no disrespect to Mrs. Bailey and Don Kelleher. I don't, no disrespect to you, but it really was, you know, these two board members worked so hard, and I, and we respected that at the end, and to give this one more shot. And I hope it's going to work out. And now we go to, go to town meeting, we need the public to show up and to make sure they support what we're trying to do.
I will do whatever I can to get as many people as I can to come to that town meeting, okay? It's a win-win situation. Thank you.
And just, I, I also don't want to omit the TAs. I think a lot of progress can be made when people shift their attitudes, as we can see here. And I also think that presumption that board members are inflexible is an inaccurate presumption, because we're getting a lot of data in real time, just like the members of the public are. So it's a lot of information that we have to review and absorb. And quite frankly, many people that I've spoken to on this issue are wondering, why are we going all, you know, going back all in with Andover when we were already down this MWRA path? So, the realness of what was done, and I don't want to keep repeating myself, makes a difference in terms of studying this further and investigating this further, so.
There's no guarantee.
Yeah.
Even when we leave tonight, there's still no guarantee, but at least the public knows the path, we're at least going to research and, and try to take in, in October. So, if there's no other questions, I'd like to-
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just a, a couple of points I just want to echo and maybe reiterate a little bit. One, MWRA and the town of Reading have been absolutely fantastic. And again, up until probably about three months ago, that was the only path we really had. You know, we, we were responding to Andover's response to the DEIR, saying that they couldn't provide us something, which is what changed. But through the entire process, and I, and I know there's a lot of strong feelings in relation to the town of North Reading over the MWRA, we had no other option at that particular point. And I can unequivocally say that they have been extremely helpful, been extremely, even generous, to the point where while there's a buy-in, you know, it's a zero-interest loan. They have been working with us diligently over the past several months, or a couple of years even, to make sure that the process of us getting tied in with them was facilitated and going on the timeline that we had established, so that we could work on decommissioning our stressed wells. You know, so I can't thank them enough, and we will continue to discuss with them. Again, they're very much aware as to where we are in our discussions with Andover and in this process, they've been made aware of it. The town of Reading has been made aware of it, we have another meeting with them this week. And the town of Reading has been good neighbors, and have been good neighbors, always been good neighbors. But one of the reasons we were looking for, again, as one of the conditions, is that, you know, we want to continue to be good neighbors and assist Reading in any way we can, where they're looking for some sort of redundancy and backup. And Andover, again, has graciously included that as part of the proposal, so long as it's feasible, and that we work out between our consultants and the engineers and, and the water quality people and all the rest. But the fact remains that they're more than willing to, to entertain that. So we're looking at regional solutions to regional problems here. So again, I can't stress enough that MWRA and Reading have been extremely cooperative in helping us meet our goals of July 1st, 2019. Additionally, over the last several months, as was stated earlier, we've met for hours and hours and hours with the town of Andover. And I, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, that I think Bob and I, and Town Administrator, did a pretty good job of conveying to you, you know, the town's concerns and frustrations and all the rest that goes, another adjective we want to use here, in relation to our ongoing relationship and what was looking to end. I just want to say that Andover has been extremely respectful and responsive to the concerns that were raised to them. And responsiveness is evidenced by the proposed terms, summary of terms that they're proposing to us right now for consideration. They recognize that it has to be something that was eyebrow-raising in order for us to change course. And it appears as though you may have successfully gotten our attention, to the point where we can further consider the proposal. But again, our timeline and game plan is, is on the same schedule. We're going to have to invest a little bit more money in order to look at this feasibility. But to me, I think we have an obligation to do so, and I think we're on the right track, and I look forward to, to garnering the support again. Again, June town meeting did not have the advantage of any other options. They now do, as we do now, and I think we're making a wise choice in anticipation of what the motion's going to be and what the result may be, of presenting to town meeting a viable alternative for consideration. But it's going to, we have to make an investment to do so, and that's $325,000 additional to do that. Plus, again, giving this board the flexibility to, in the short term, file the home rule petition rather than waiting till next June. So, again, I want to acknowledge the town administrators, the town manager, again, Mark Clark, Andrew, the entire team that we spent the summer with from Andover, for working with us, and again, sometimes twice a week, to get to this point this evening. And to my fellow board members, your questions were good, your points were well-taken, the message was delivered, you now see the fruits- message was delivered, you now see the fruits of our labor, and I'm excited for the prospects of giving the town of North Reading the opportunity to have another choice.
Thank you again for taking care of Reading, too. I know there's no guarantee, but if we can try to find that connection for them along the process, I think we owe it to them.
And again, one of the other things that we talked at the last meeting was touched on today, is that Andover also has committed to working with us to look towards sewer, the Greater Lawrence Sewer District, which, again, what we're looking for, for gallonage in relation to our needs, we're looking well beyond 10, 20 years from now in relation to future economic development, sewage is going to be key to that, the numbers that we're requesting through Andover reflect those needs, and we look to have our means net for the foreseeable future, at least 99 years. So, again, we appreciate their willingness, and they recognize, for them, there's very little on the table in relation to assisting us in getting through Greater Lawrence Sewer, but we appreciate their gesture, and again, they know that's important to us, and again, that was obviously a very important factor to consider, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Schultz, you have the question?
Yeah, just real brief, I want to thank our neighbors from north for coming down tonight, and also want, like Mr. Prisco said, thanks to our neighbors to the south, Reading, who have been very good, and especially give a shout-out to the two colleagues to my left here, who, Andover's a fine town, I don't know if I want to spend my whole summer vacation here like you guys did, but you guys put a lot, and I don't, the public doesn't always see what the board does, and you guys put hours and hours and hours upon this, and I think that you need to be publicly recognized for that, and, you know, without your hard work, you two guys just wouldn't have gotten it done, and I think it's important that that's publicly noted.
That's what we get paid for.
That's right. Pick up your check on the way over there.
We all do this for the.
We have a couple of motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move to postpone until no later than April 30, 2018, further permitting design and construction activities for an MWRA water interconnection, in order to further evaluate the feasibility of Andover providing all of North Reading's water.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Misery. Any more discussion?
Just in relation to, the April 30th date is, again, to keep our feet to the fire and Andover's feet to the fire in relation to moving this thing forward, so that we can make an informed decision in the short term, so that we're not well beyond the July 1, 2019 date. And again, what we're looking at, this motion does, basically puts back our construction in the Reading infrastructure, probably at least a year, so if we choose to go MWRA and not go with Andover, that's the timeline we're talking about, and so the date that was chosen was specific to keep our feet to the fire, make sure that we get the necessary information, our consultants on board early, and get the information to the board, so we can make an informed decision in short order, rather than.
It's a priority, so whatever it takes, we're going to do it. Any other questions? Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Unanimous?
One more.
Yeah, one more.
We're not done yet. Mr. Chairman, I move to propose extension terms included in the summary of terms offered by the town of Andover, as a basis for further discussion of an extension of the existing intermunicipal agreement between the towns of Andover and North Reading for water, and to instruct the administration to work with the town of Andover to create an IMA document affecting those terms for final approval by the Andover and North Reading boards of selection by October 2, 2017.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this date, again, was set so that it would be, the key to, for the town of North Reading now, is because of the first vote, we're potentially delaying construction and the tying with the MWRA. So, the key for us now is the extension on the intermunicipal agreement, which Andover has offered, again, as two one-year extensions. I think we're pretty close to what the terms and conditions are going to be, but again, we want that executed sooner rather than later. We're putting a deadline on ourselves, again, for basically two meetings from now, our October 2 meeting, to have some sort of an agreement for us to agree to.
And I just want to make sure everyone's clear, we don't need town meeting vote to do that, we have the authority already.
Correct.
To enter into that agreement.
Correct.
Okay, any more? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard? Unanimous. Now, you can clap. Again, I want to thank you, I want to take, we're going to just take a five-minute recess, allow folks to edit, and we can say thank you.
Sorry, I made a mistake.
You have that effect on you.
I don't know. But the record show Bill Bellwitz has acted in the building.
Who we go to here?
Okay.
We'll go right through.
Quiet, hear they come.
Okay.
Yes, you could turn the heating down, right?
Jane had it sixty-four.
To what, sixty-eight, sixty-four?
It's on sixty-four right now.
Sixty-four.
Just a little slow.
Or turn up the lower.
Let's just shut off a little.
Is he all, maybe motivate us to move right along?
I think.
Okay, okay. Next thing, I'm gonna go back to approving, I'm sorry, yes, approve and sign the amendment of the purchase and sale agreement for 104 Lowell Road, Polte Homes.
Gilberto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The town has been in continued discussions with Polte Homes of New England LLC relative to the sale of the former Berry property, 104 Lowell Road, to Polte Homes for the development of four hundred and fifty units of age-restricted housing. And as the discussions have progressed, a number of different benchmarks have been met, including the receipt of a special permit from the Planning Commission in the month of August, middle of month of August, and they're in the midst of a series of regulatory processes relative to the wastewater treatment facility. They've also received a permit from the state relative to the environmental filings required, and I believe they received that in the middle to end of July. So progress has been made on a significant permitting fronts. The remaining area, which this purchase and sales agreement will address, is relative to some of the modifications for the site layout to make the site work for Polte's development, as well as the provision of potable water to the site. And I'll just kind of briefly summarize what the changes are by referring to the map up here. There are a series of easements on the property that relate to the surrounding parcels as well, most notably the two on the top there. The one that I'm pointing to right now is a wastewater treatment facility easement for the current Edgewood Development, and the one below it is a wastewater easement for 102 Lowell Road, which is also owned by the town and was formerly part of the Berry property, has not yet gone through the disposition process. We issued an RFP earlier in the year, we didn't get any responses, and the town's been looking to reissue an RFP at some point down the road. So effectively, this purchase and sale agreement, this amendment to the purchase and sale agreement would convey that the town will actually retain ownership of a parcel of land that's similar to the size, but not exactly the size, for those two wastewater treatment fields. Initially, we were looking to convey them and to leave them restricted by the easements. Polte has asked not to acquire them, so we will now be retaining ownership of them. Again, the one here for 102 Lowell Road, slightly modified in size but able to provide the sufficient amount of wastewater treatment capacity for the development needs here at 102 Lowell Road. There's also an easement along the western border, along the Wilmington Town Line, that connects town-owned land to the south of the property with the public way up here on Lowell Road. Polte has asked that that easement be relocated, and we're gonna relocate it within the footprint of their development design, to still connect down to the southern portion of the property but to go through the driveways that they're proposing to construct. In terms of the easements, there'll also be an easement for a town-owned water main to be constructed to serve the nine buildings that'll be on the property, and that will also largely follow the development area through the driveway. For those of you who have seen the layout, which I can bring up on another map, they have nine buildings and a wastewater treatment facility, as well as a clubhouse that are dispersed amongst the developable personal area of the parcel. The amendment will address these issues as well as a remaining issue concerning potable water. In particular, it's the provision of water to the site for development purposes. When the property was initially developed in the mid-two thousands, the town obtained an easement to install a water main to provide water to not only 100 Lowell Road, which is the Edgewood Development, but also to connect down to the south here where there's additional town-owned land with a goal of potentially looping the water system through the water treatment facility that's located to the south of the Berry property. That easement allowed for, and you can kind of just see it barely highlighted there, that easement allowed for the construction of a water main, which is town-owned and is in service right now, however restricted that main, to provide water for 100 Lowell Road and the property to the south. And we are in discussions with, and have received initial approval from Lincoln Properties, which owns the Edgewood Development and their management company, UBS, to modify the terms of that easement to allow for any potable water provision, in particular, providing potable water here at the intersection of the properties, so that there'll be water service for this development. We're now in a process with Lincoln Properties and their parent, their parent, UBS, to obtain third-party mortgage holder approval as well, which we hope to do. But where this is something that is out of the control, the direct control of the town and of Polte and the development, because it's a third party that's involved, that we've modified the purchase and sale agreement to also take account of the effort that'll be required for that. And what this effectively does is extend the period under which the purchase and sale agreement can be in effect for one year from September first of this year to September of two thousand and eighteen. And it effectively states that all of the due diligence, with the exception of this water main and some easements for signage at the front of the property being resolved, those will be the only contingencies remaining. So what does that mean? In short, it means that with the signature of this amendment by the board, we'll be able to, we'll have the assurance of an additional deposit to follow from Polte Homes. It's another three hundred thousand dollars that would be due within three days of the signature by the town, should it happen this evening, which will bring the total deposit in the town's hands of approximately five hundred thousand dollars associated with this purchase, and trigger a period of the one year for the review by Polte, by Lincoln Properties mortgage holder to address the issue of water and the discussion between Polte and the town relative to the signage on the property. I think that was a long explanation, but there are a lot of things at work here. It's a complicated development, because there are a number of different abutting properties that have an interest in 104 Lowell Road, but we believe we reached a resolution that addresses the town's long-term development needs.
Mr. Maseri.
As I understood, the fact that Polte is, doesn't want to take possession of the Leach Fields, right, that they're not asking for reduction in the sale price.
That's correct. No change in the sale price.
Any other questions? Don, if you wouldn't mind grabbing the microphone.
Does this change the timing and the percentage of the sale price that we get? If I understood you, it sounded like it was going out another year before the closing on this.
So this provides a window within which the transaction, the transaction may be concluded that extends beyond the windows, window of time originally contemplated in the purchase and sale agreement. You're correct. With regard to our agreement with the Commonwealth, there is an incentive that has been established for December fourth of this year, two thousand and seventeen, relative to our percentage of the share. And that's something that we are in, that we've been in discussions with the Commonwealth about to potentially address. And I don't think I could say much more than that publicly, but we're aware of that, and you are correct, that there would be an impact, and it's something that we are looking to address.
But we're continuing to try to find avenues to get to the right lender contact to review that easement, the legal counsel with the lender, because that's really the last hurdle we have. We've done, if you look at the spirit of the sale partnership model, we've met it. And I think we would be prepared to close within the timeframe. So to have this one little issue that's completely out of our control is very frustrating. So like the town administrator said, behind the scenes, we are trying to work to get, to get this addressed, to make sure that we're not harmed for it, because we did our job. And especially the town administrator and his staff, they worked so hard to get this where it is. You can't even imagine, every day, there is something going on related to this transaction. But it's a thirty million dollar transaction. And a thirty million dollar transaction is a lot of moving parts. And there hasn't been a day that we weren't working on this, so we shouldn't be harmed because of it, for the one thing that happened. So we'll update everybody when we have more, hopefully at the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, that's a very good point. I don't want anyone to get an impression that we've somehow kicked out the closing of the transaction for one year. This is merely a period of time within which the closing could take place, as the chairman indicated. Nearly every other facet of this proposal has been addressed, and for this project's development has been addressed at this point in time. This simply provides us, provides the town the assurance of the deposit being paid, limits the reasons for which the transaction would, could not be concluded on the part of the developer, but may require some further discussion with the Commonwealth about the terms under the LDA.
And I just want to point out something to Mr. Belavanz, just so you know. The Leaching area for 102 Lowell Road, what they originally proposed back to us, what they wanted to grant back to the town, I pushed back to try to increase that, because I know when, if we could put a parking lot on it tied to 102 Lowell Road, I know you would have asked for some areas for snow storage and stuff like that. So they did increase it. Wasn't, you know, wasn't tremendous, but I think it was enough to meet your request for snow removal and where we would store it on that site if we ended up putting a parking lot there. So I want to thank Polte Homes for being willing to grant a little more square footage there. Okay. Anything else?
Nope, other than there's a motion and there's a document in the to-sign folder.
I'm gonna turn it over to our clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and sign the First Amendment to the Purchase and Sales Agreement dated March ninth, two thousand and seventeen, between the Town of North Reading and Polte Homes of New England.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Mr. Larry. Any more discussion? I'd just say I want to thank again, town administrator, staff, also Polte Homes. They've all been working very hard. Everybody is certainly motivated to get this done sooner than later, so, but we're gonna keep the pressure up, and hopefully we can get Lincoln Properties, property management company, to work with us to try to continue to keep the pressure up to get this. Yes, Kate, and then Michael.
Is it, is it this, this isn't the First Amendment, is it?
It is, yes. We've had extensions that we've granted.
Right.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we, if, if we had signed it, we would have had the deposit by now.
Oh, I see, okay.
And that was the other thing, Polte was willing to do. They didn't want to give the full deposit, but it was something that I pushed back on, and they were willing to do it. So I want to thank them again, because I think having the full deposit, it just gives us some reassurance that, you know, everybody's still motivated to get this closed, so. Any other discussion, any more question? Yes, Michael.
Just on your comments, I want to thank, first, Mr. Belavanz for his input, working with the town planner Danielle McKnight, to make sure that our, that the development interests for 102 Lowell Road were looked after during this discussion. And again, I want to thank the town planner for her support as well. So thank you to them both.
Yeah, as we go through this transaction, you know, Mrs. McKnight has a lot of strengths, but let me tell you, we are so fortunate to have her as we go through this acquisition, because she is invaluable through the process, so please pass along our appreciation. Okay, on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Will we all need to sign?
Yes.
We need signatures. Okay. Now, let's get into the meeting.
No, he's signing. I got a pen.
Review October Town Meeting articles.
Did we step over number five?
Well, actually, actually, voting on it?
No, we voted during.
During the warrant. I asked it, we'll put it to the warrant.
Just one, can I? Just one, yes. Just one copy here, Michael?
Just 'cause we were running out of time.
Just can't copy.
Yep. Andrew.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gilberto, I'm turning it over to you.
Mr. Chair, would be just one moment.
Thank you.
While I pull up the warrant.
We gotta sign it. Thank you, Finance Committee for being here tonight, taking your time away. And our Finance Director, Ms. Rourke, is joining us tonight, so thank you. I know it's Tuesday night, usually, yeah, just one, industry night out for you young people, so, thanks for being here.
Don, you would know. Who are we missing?
Awesome.
Oh, Ian, oh, Ian. Ian, was that your signature, really?
Yeah.
Sometimes I've signed, right?
Kate, you're a lawyer. Is that a legal signature?
Thanks, pal.
Yes, it was.
I don't know. Shane, can you read his signature?
Just trying.
Yeah.
I don't know who it is, though.
Looks like something out of preschool.
He fled penmanship.
None's gonna come after me now if they saw me there.
Plausible deniability signature right there.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I put the warrant up on the screen here, and it's been an evolving document since it first appeared as a list at the meeting of August twenty-first, but I'll take the articles in order, and then perhaps we can go back and, or along the way make changes.
We can't change the order, though, right? The order is what it is.
Once you sign it, it is what it is, yes. The board has the authority to make changes up until.
Okay. And the board would need to sign it this evening. Mr. Ferriello, we'll contact him when we're about halfway through or so, and he'll come down to sign it. So we thank him for his flexibility. Article one, here in Act on Reports to Town Officers and Committees, this is a routine article that appears at every town meeting. It provides an avenue for boards, commissions, committees to report to town meeting. Article two, again, routine article for prior year bills. There are some expenses, and I'd ask the Finance Director to comment on them.
At this time, we have two prior year bills, one within the Department of Public Works and one within the Human Resources Department, and we will know more as it gets closer to October Town Meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Rourke. Article three, transfer of funds to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. Again, a routine article that we use for our long-term financial planning. I'd ask Liz to speak to it.
We are proposing for Article three to transfer two hundred thousand dollars from free cash, and this is part of the annual capital plan that we've had in place for five years now, Don?
Four.
Four, yes. So it's part of our annual appropriation to the Capital Improvement Stabilization to fund capital items.
Michael?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Have free cash been certified yet?
The Department of Revenue will be out in, on Tuesday, September twelve.
On what?
On Tuesday, September twelve, the Department of Revenue is coming.
Oh, okay.
So we do not have.
That's when they're coming out?
Exactly. We do not have it certified as of yet.
Yep.
Article four is the appropriation of funds to the Stabilization Fund, and an article that we have for, generally, generally for each town meeting. Article five, right now, we do not have a dollar amount targeted.
Hold on.
Excuse me. Through you to the Town Finance Director, do you have any idea of what anticipated unexpended funds will be remaining from warrant articles of previous years that might be available for appropriation to stabilization?
At this time, there are no unexpended funds from previous warrant articles. The last transfer into the Stabilization Fund was October seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, of two hundred thousand dollars, and I think once free cash is certified, the town administrator and myself will review what funds are available to potentially appropriate to the Stabilization Fund.
Any further question on Article four?
Kate, you're the first one.
I am, thank you.
Five.
Article five, transfer of funds for the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund. Do not have a amount targeted for transferring at this point in time, but we'll review our options once the total of all available funds is known later this month. I would note that we regularly transfer funds in at the June Town Meeting as part of our long-term funding plan for this OPEV matter, and we did make such a transfer in at the June Town Meeting this year. Article six, relative to the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen operating budget, this is the place where we generally address any transfers within the budget, as well as funding the first year of any settled collective bargaining agreements. There will be a number of transfers that will be associated with matters of departmental importance, which we will review at the September eighteenth warrant article hearing, but I do expect that we'll be recommending some transfers. Article seven, this is generally a fifty thousand dollar article for funding repairs to town buildings. The Department of Public Works is in the process of formulating any requests for town buildings, and the information would be presented at the September eighteenth warrant article hearing. There's no questions on Article seven. Article eight, this was an article carried over from the June Town Meeting to fund the Town Hall and Fire Station feasibility study. It, I actually don't believe it ended up on the warrant for the June Town Meeting, but it was discussed, and the consensus was to revisit the matter for the October Town Meeting, and we have drafted an article accordingly. I presented the board with an option, which follows the red or letters relative to a facility's master plan, and this is basically based on some feedback that we received back in the spring and have heard along the way relative to other town facilities and the concern for those facilities. Clearly, the master plan would be a broader approach, looking at all of the buildings from more of a high-level view tied into the services. It's also more costly, based on what we've looked at. Right now, we're carrying a conservative estimate of approximately fifty thousand dollars for the feasibility study for the Town Hall and Fire Station. We've gotten some quotes that are a little bit lower than that, but we believe to be conservative, fifty thousand dollars would be a good number to plan for. For the facility's master plan, based on our discussion with some consultants initially, as well as other communities, that's an order of magnitude of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or greater. So again, it was put on the draft purely for the board to be aware of what would be required for something more, more extensive, looking at more of the buildings. And we would ask for a direction from the board relative to either one or the other, or both of these articles to appear on the warrant prior to it being signed tonight. I don't know if you want to come back to the discussion later on, Mr. Chairman, or?
I don't see why we shouldn't be able to discuss it right now. We came up at the last, came up for our June Town Meeting, and we had a lengthy conversation about it, and just felt that I got the impression the majority of the board won three, considered here for our October Town Meeting. I'm still in favor of just doing the Town Hall and Fire Station for now, and then in a year from now, we can consider any, all the others. We'll be financially in a different position then, but I think this is at least worthy to get started now, for these two. But I don't know how many of us feels.
I agree with you. I was kind of foreboding for last time. I think it's time to, let's get the studies done and see where we're at.
Mr. Larry.
I think if we're gonna take a look at the overall picture, I think the town facilities' master plan would incorporate Town Hall and Fire Station feasibility study, and depending upon what direction we go in for whatever complexes we're talking about, it would include Town Hall and the Fire Station. So to me, you know, if we're going to expend, you know, tens of thousands of dollars on something that we're gonna use as a tool moving forward, you know, I think in overall, I mean, the DPW site certainly needs a good, hard look, and it's been, you know, overlooked for a number of years, along with whatever our master plan's going to be in relation to reciting Town Hall or anything else. So to me, I think the master plan is probably the best route to go to take a look at the entire picture rather than just pigeonhole a couple of buildings, because we have other complexes that are in need of upgrading and repair.
No, I mean, the senior center needs to be reviewed again, obviously, so I wouldn't be against it, just, you know, I was looking at the financial end of it, but, you know, if the majority of the board's in favor, it has to be done. I agree with you, it has to be done. I think we shouldn't do nothing. We need to do something here. Right, yeah. Mrs. Menybeli?
I think I agree with Solomon O'Leary. I think community center, senior center, definitely Town Hall, the additional Fire Station, I think, I think it all should be looked at. We're gonna spend, spend the money on a study. I think the other point that was raised was there was a, there was a feasibility study done for the relocated or proposed Fire Station.
Satellite station.
Satellite station, yeah.
Mr. Maseri? Are you done? I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I just think we should take a look at everything and figure out what the need is and how we can move forward. We don't have to do, obviously, we can't afford to move forward on everything all at once, but let's take a look at it all.
At least know what our options are. Yep. Mr. Maseri?
I was gonna say, I think it's important that we take a look at the big picture, and then, based on that, kind of set up some priorities and some timeframe, and how you might do some things together or not.
Yeah.
So I think I would go for the whole thing.
Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, and I think it's important for us to finally bring forward a discussion about this community center that everybody's talked about but us. This board has not had a discussion in relation to it. We have not taken a position on it. We have not endorsed the idea or taken any position at all on it, yet we've got organizations out there raising funds to bring this thing to fruition. So I think it's important, from an overall standpoint, for the board to take a look at it and see what the feasibility of it is, and take a position on it. Again, I think we're putting the cart before the horse, and we have it for a while now, raising some money for something that the board hasn't even taken a position on.
Right, it gets down to the point of someone could build this thing, and now we have the issue of manning it, supporting it, maintaining it. So it's probably worthwhile looking at that as part of the big picture.
I think we should be involved in the discussion.
We should, you're right.
Just that.
I've been waiting and wondering when we were gonna have this discussion about that particular.
So was I. So I figured that was a good time.
Yeah. Okay, so what we'll do is, for the sake of progress, before I say that, yes, Mrs. Elbert? You grab the microphone.
To the town administrator, do you have a ballpark figure on the town, on the town facilities master plan?
The cost? The order of magnitude is, the order of magnitude for the cost is at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we would still need to refine that further, from my understanding. And we'd be basing that on estimates from discussions with consultants who are, who know our buildings and have been involved in previous reviews, as well as requests that other communities have needed in order to contract with a firm to do the work.
So I concur that these are
Albrecht.
To the town administrator, do you have a ballpark figure on the town, on the town facilities master plan?
The cost? Was that a hundred and fifty? The order of magnitude is, the order of magnitude for the cost is at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we would still need to refine that further, from my understanding. And we'd be basing that on estimates from discussions with consultants who are, who know our buildings and have been involved in previous reviews, as well as requests that other communities have needed in order to contract with a, a firm to do the work.
So I, I concur that these are all important things to study, but I would also, um, suggest, and I think that almost everyone at that table is aware of it, that we have had any number of studies, um, over the last twenty years, most of which are collecting dust.
Yeah, I was, I was on.
And the problem with those studies are, that if you don't act on them within a couple of years, they're basically useless in many respects. In other words, the prices have gone up, the buildings have further deteriorated, or whatever else. So I, I have a hesitation to go out and do a, uh, yet another study, all right, um, unless we really are committed to some sort of a timeframe that makes sense, given the information we'll be collecting.
Okay. Michael. Mr. Messer.
You know, I, I think what's gonna be found to be different is that, you know, with the Pulte project and our push to expand our econo-, you know, our commercial base, right, that, uh, a lot of the things that we did before, when we get through looking at the budget, right, unless you wanted to do an override, nothing was gonna happen. And, uh, not to say that, in the end, you might want to do an override, but, you know, I think at this point, uh, we have some options. Uh, we have potentially an increase in tax revenue, although, albeit, you might say it's been spent fifteen times around the corner, but, I mean, that's one reason to take a look at the, the whole picture, look at the, the timing, and then make some decisions on what you're gonna do with additional funds. And then you've got the capital associated with the sale of the property, and I'm not suggesting that it's spent on anything at this point, I'm just saying that, that the environment is a little different than it was five, ten years ago.
Well, you're right, and we were both on the Infrastructure Study Committee back during the pyramids, um, and, and I, I appreciate what you're saying, but it still doesn't address the issue of, is this another report that's gonna sit around and that is gonna collect dust and be outdated by the time somebody is, needs or wants to, or the town decides to build whatever? And when you suggest that the town will be quite different and that we will have more of a, um, commercial base, we don't have that yet.
Well, may, maybe this should be broken, and maybe this should be broken into two phases. One, to take just a broad overview of everything, and take it back to the board, and then decide, uh, let the board decide what the priorities are gonna be, and then put focus on those specific items that are on the top of the list. I mean, there's a lot of ways of dealing with it.
Mr. Messer. I'm Mr. O'Leary, sorry.
Thank you. I, I just think, uh, again, I chaired the Facilities Use Master Plan Committee back in the nineties, you know, and again, it's like, thump, right, nice acronym, thump, but anyway. Um, it was, so we've done this over the years, and again, it's true, a lot of them have collected dust, but a lot of it also provided some valuable information. I think what's different now, and I can look at it from a historical standpoint, is we do have different opportunities now that we didn't have available to us even five or ten years ago. You know, we, we have the potential for some additional economic growth and development from some sewerage opportunities, um, that we're, everybody's been talking about for years, and looks like we have a possibility of bringing some of that to fruition, which is going to realize us some additional revenue. We have our, uh, MAPC study, and what are we looking to do with Route Twenty Eight? We've already taken a step in rezoning part of Route Twenty Eight. If we're looking to form a downtown area, you know, that's gonna be part of this, and you know, how are we going to effectuate that? Again, it's all gonna be phased in, it's all gonna do it overnight, we can't afford it, but for the same token, if we have a plan laid out for us that we can phase in, and, you know, I, I think it's just gonna give us a lot more, uh, bring the vision to the paper, to see really what can we accomplish and, uh, what ideas do we have to move forward. So I, I think it's, uh, I think it's gonna be money well spent, I think the opportunities for additional revenue are coming, and, um, I think it's money that's gonna be well spent and not necessarily collect a lot of gas.
I don't necessarily disagree with that, but you've also just listed a, a lot of, um, very expensive projects, not the least of which is searing Twenty Eight and hooking into Andor, which, you know, will be incredibly expensive, and I'm not suggesting it shouldn't be done, but just that when you start delineating all of these different projects that are already in the mainstream for, or in everybody's forethought, um, and on top of that, we have a huge debt for the new school. Uh, so I'm not, I'm not convinced that we should spend a whole lot of time planning on how to immediately spend the money on a new fire station, or a new library, or whatever else you want to put on the list. Because right now, we still have the KBA study that was done just a few years ago, that tells you what repairs you really need to make and how you can refurbish some of the existing buildings, which we really haven't done anything with. Um, so I, I, I'm just very hesitant, not so much to spend the money, but I, I, I'm not convinced that this report will be valid by the time we're ready to pay for it.
Yeah, just, Mr. Chairman, it just, you know, for June Town Meeting, I was not necessarily in support of the article at that particular time, because I had some of the same reservations. We're gonna look at, you know, a West Side Station, a new fire station, we're looking at maybe, you know, renovating or relocating Town Hall, and to me, I think we needed to look at a broader picture as to what are we really looking to do in conjunction with the other studies and the efforts that are taking place with the CPC and the rezoning. So to me, I'm looking for the bigger picture, more long-term, and again, you know, the, our ability to support it and pay for it is a, is a, is a valid concern. But if we have a, a master plan that's laid out, that we can phase in, that the community can buy into, you know, then we have something to sell. And again, overrides aren't easy, and they're not gonna be easy, we have the, the school debt. But to me, if I'm gonna spend fifty thousand dollars on two facilities that, yes, need some addressing, but we're gonna spend money then after looking at it in the wrong place, that's a mistake.
Well, I, yeah, I'm not questioning.
So therefore, I'm more in favor of this whole feasibility study for.
I'm questioning either study.
You know.
I understand that, and I think the timing is now that we do this study. I do, I firmly believe it.
So again, if I'm gonna support anything, it's the Town Facilities Master Plan. I'm not necessarily in favor of just Town Hall and Fire Station. Uh, my, my position hasn't changed on that, because I think this is more targeted to give us a better overall vision as to really what we should be aiming to do, and I think the timing is different than it was before, you know, and I think the opportunities are different than they were before. And, um, it's not too soon to look at the overall picture, entire picture, rather than just focused on two buildings.
I think, I think we're a different community now, and I think it's a different board now, that when we make these kind of investments, we're going to use them. I, I'm not saying the other boards didn't want to use them, I just didn't think, I don't think we had the, the future revenues that we have potentially had. Abby, if you could just let me speak.
All right.
I think the timing is perfect for this, because I'm not only looking at Pulte, I'm looking at the potential, what we've got potentially coming down in Conquest Street. We talk about changes on Main Street, the investments we're making in economic development, they are going to allow us to at least consider making some upgrades, and this building is tired. The fire station's tired, the DPW building's tired, the senior center, and so on. If we don't have a good plan in place, or how are we gonna use those new funds, or those potential funds, you know, granted, we have to stabilize these tax rates, I get it, but we also have to invest in some of this infrastructure that we've neglected for so long. And you look at our schools, look at them all, they're beautiful. There was, somebody had a plan, and they executed to that plan. We don't have a plan, and we need one. So I'm gonna agree with you, and I was hesitant to say, you know, go to the full, full, full Town Facilities Master Plan, because I wasn't sure where the board was, so I was trying to dip my toe in the water here, but I was hopeful that we would do this, because I think it's, the timing is right.
I'm not suggesting that we, that we don't need to do these projects, and I'm not suggesting that it's necessarily a bad idea to have a master plan. What I'm suggesting is, I'm not too excited about spending money on a plan, if there's no plan, for lack of a better term, in accomplishing some of the items that are on it, because we have, we have sat on.
We need it to do that.
A lot of reports, some of which are within the last five or six years.
Abby, you made that clear. You made it clear like seven times. We know, and I think if we're asking for it, and this board wants to go to Town Meeting, and we get more successful in getting the funding, then it's our responsibility and the town administrator's responsibility and his staff's responsibility to execute it and to do something with it, and to be held accountable if we don't. That's, I'm done, you wanna?
Just a question and a comment. The question is on the, the townwide master facility study, how long period of time do you see that taking to complete that? How long did you expect to report?
You know, I have not had the direct conversations. I would say a minimum of a year, probably twelve to eighteen months. I think that's a fair assessment.
Wilmington just finished it, right?
I think theirs was about a year.
Yeah, just over a year.
They have, they do have an established permanent building committee, which is one thing we don't have, you know, here in town, but they went a year, I believe.
Yep.
I see the advantage of, of this is, is kind of an inventory of all the town property, and a, hopefully, a look at its current state, where it is, not where it's located, but its physical condition, its, the ability to rehab it in place, or whether it needs to be rebuilt. That would be what I would hope you would be getting out of this study. And if it takes us a year, a year and a half, you're not, you're not, you're not gonna be putting sewers on Conquest Street in the next six months.
Oh, God.
You're not gonna be generating any, any revenue from, from Pulte in the next three or four years, five years.
No, next, next.
Big money.
Big money?
Big money.
Three, three years, three, three to four years.
Wait, okay.
Four years, we'll say four years.
What I'm, I'm saying is that I think we, we ought to be doing this, we ought to be looking at the big picture of what it is and that, that we have, and what, what needs to happen to it, uh, the, the talk about the multi-generational community center.
I agree.
I think that's, that's, that's important, but all the other buildings are too, and I think then, what you need to do, as you suggested, is then stop prioritizing, you know, what, what needs to be done, when it could be done, how can we afford to pay for it, and obviously, you can't do it all at once, but you need, you need, you need a plan to start somewhere there. I think starting this and taking it a year, a year and a half to get it done is, is appropriate time.
Thank you. Mrs. Minipelli, then, Mr. Bellavance, okay? And then, Mrs. Mullin.
I was, I was actually thinking, when we've discussed this previously, that we, we, what I would think we would want to look into in any firm that we do hire to be able to do this work, if we end up getting approval to do it, should be able to offer us this, is sort of streamlining services into one complex. How much of these buildings can, how much of this space can we redo to offer more than just one select division of the town? And that's the way to go now, is streamlining it so that residents can go to a complex, a specific area where, that all these different departments operate out of. So I was thinking of that in terms of feasibility, instead of, you know, piecemeal, oh, we have to fix the windows here, and we have to build a, you know, build a lift there, and fix up the roof here. I was thinking of it in terms of a different study that I hope affirm nowadays in the way, the way that, you know, you might have a police station with a community room, or, like you said, a multi-generational room within the Town Hall, and a meeting room for us to be in that, you know, that, that all the different groups can meet in, and things like that. So I was thinking of it in terms of, what's the feasibility to be able to do that? And in addition to taking an inventory and, you know, maybe seeing what needs to be worked on sooner rather than later, that type of thing. I hope it would, I, my hope is that it would incorporate that. You know, what can we streamline into one complex that people can go to? You know, one centralized location to be able to go to do many things.
Thank you. Mr. Bell.
Bill Bellavance with the CPC. Actually, I was looking at this, and it really gives you a full picture of all the buildings in the property. Not only that, is, you know, we are working on our master plan too, so this kind of helps tie with, with that whole, trying to figure out the full town. Um, and the other question I had is, would they be looking at the building itself, condition of it, maybe any improvements that could be done, uh, even putting your capital plan for the next five years for some of these buildings that may be able to be reused? Um, would be definitely a great thing to look at. And then, location of all our town-owned properties, you know, we have, like, Chairman Prisco has brought this up many a times, we have a lot of, uh, property in town, um, you know, what's the best use of some of this property? Maybe it is selling it, maybe it is getting some of the funds, but I would hope we'd look at really all that, along with, you know, all this in the study, and I, uh, I really definitely agree with the master plan. I vote on this.
Ms. Mullin.
Thank you. Um, I, I sometimes just get disappointed that when I, when I talk about a particular thing, that I do look at the big picture, and, uh, been talking for a long time about the recreation center, or the, then it became the community center. If anybody does know me, they should know that I look at the whole town as one big picture, and I've never just looked at recreation, and neither does Recreation LUC. When we built the Ipswich River Park, we built something for everyone. When we built the, um, football field, baseball, football field, uh, I was one of the ones that said, don't just do it for recreation, because the school needs it. I'm looking at the big picture, I look at properties that we have lost along the way, and I, when I first saw that they were going to talk about a fire station, extension, Andor, Town Hall, um, the couple of the four committees that I'm on, that cover seniors, youth services, recreation, land utilization, so, speaking for all those committees, we looked at, the big picture is to do the or. And the reason for it, it's almost like, for those of you that play whist, sometimes you have a three hearts, and you throw it away for a six of spade, and then you get an eight, and then you go up, by the time you're done, you've kind of looked at everything, because there are properties that we may own, that we can sell, take the money from it, put it in something else, parlay it in something else. If anything, you saw what we did with the Pulte homes. Great, you saw what you've done with the, the water. You kids accomplished two major things, this group of selectmen, in four years, because you took a look at things that needed to get done. And after the last, uh, meeting that Mr. Bellavance and myself were at, with his whole committee and with the master study, when they came in and talked about what are you gonna do with Main Street and all those things, we stayed, and we said there should be a group formed from all these committees that look at it. The, you've got the Stop and Shop still, that we're not doing anything, the post office, there's no reason that now collectively, especially when you see what you did with Pulte and the water, that we look at all those pieces of property on Main Street and within town, can we buy something, can we sell it, can we do this, can we do that? And when you're done, you've got that puddle of money along with Pulte, you've got Hillview that can work again with this, uh, uh, Recreation LUC for property, whether it's the, the recreation or not, that gets, ties into the senior center. We looked at all those things, we're not just talking about recreation. So sometimes when I hear, well, no, but, you know, we haven't brought it for you, we've been talking about this for a very long time. We didn't come here because there was no money yet, and, but we have talked to Hillview, they're on board when it's time for that, the senior center's on board, and we've got people that are gonna look into grants, and have talked to Brad Jones about it, so that if, again, if we look at that full picture, then we're taking care of all the properties that need to get done, and we all agree, in some type of order, what's done, but it would be a shame to talk about where to put a fire station, and where to put, and do some money here, do something here, but maybe this piece of property should be sold. So that's why we're asking to look at it. Don't ever look at me for just recreation, or just seniors, or just whatever. In my sixty-some-odd years in town, I have looked, I believe, at every piece of property in town, and every group in town, so, uh, speaking for everyone, not just for one segment of it. Thank you.
All right. So I think we've collectively have come to the conclusion that we're gonna go with the or, and, uh, you can make that amendment on the change, on the fly? I will, and I'll ask for some constructive feedback.
Like, like, where are we gonna get the money?
No, that'll be for later.
That'll be for later.
That's the next meeting. Um, but in all seriousness, I did put the list of all the town-owned facilities on it that I could think of. The one that I will note that is not town-owned, but I think is relevant for the conversation is the housing authority, and I know, Mr. Chairman, you have an update to provide later on relative to our discussions there. And I know, Mr. Chairman, you have an update to provide later on relative to our discussions there. But they are listed on there as a...
The DPW isn't there, but I didn't see it.
So in the revised version that we have up on the screen, we, for some reason, they weren't on the copy that went to the, to the board on Thursday with the meeting packet, but they were intended to be included. So they are on it here. I did not make a specific reference to facilities that don't exist yet. I don't know whether that's necessary. And the way it's written, it's just including but not limited to it. Just, I guess, maybe to summarize this from my perspective, the thought that I had here was, based on all of the conversations that I've heard over the past three years relative to the facilities and the needs in the facilities, looking at what the buildings need, which we have some preliminary information on some of the buildings and some more detailed buildings, more detailed information on other buildings. But really, I think it comes down to the functions of the buildings as well, and where we want those functions that we currently offer or look to offer in the future to be cited. And I hope is that this type of article will be able to achieve that for us. We'll continue refining the cost, I'm not going up to the town meeting. I'm going to make a change here before we ask Mr. Ferriello to win this signature.
Mr. Messeri.
My recommendation would be to take off the list of all the buildings and keep it more general by saying town-owned buildings and related facilities.
Well, how do you, how do you count for?
Really, what has to happen is, Michael, what I'm thinking of is, town meeting votes for a certain amount of money that we propose. Then you've got to get somebody together to put a complete specification of what you want, whoever you're going to give this contract to, to do, right? And that's why I'm just suggesting that if you leave it broad, you have a lot more flexibility.
What about buildings that don't exist, Bob? How do you capture that in the?
Well, that's, well...
Future facility needs.
Future facility needs is something like...
Current and future needs, okay.
Current and future facility needs. You know, rather than a specific facility, again, we have a recreation center at Ipswich River Park. I mean, that may be somewhere else, if we're even anticipating that, so it doesn't have to be there.
If you put it the way it is, then you can't go any further.
Well, no, this is, this says not limited to, but I agree, I agree with...
It did say not limited.
Yeah, but I, I agree with Mr. Messeri that it should be, you know, you know, current and future facility needs.
All-encompassing.
Right. All-encompassing, and therefore we can...
Michael, do you need more feedback to write something?
Well, the, the writing is going to happen now, so this is probably the time to do it. The constable's here to decide for what you guys say.
Do you want to go ahead and describe something while I talk about something else?
I think...
Because it's kind of related?
Yeah.
I'm going to bring up our meeting with DHCD?
Sure.
While you're going through this?
Yeah, do you want to do that right now?
While you're typing?
Yeah.
But I want to make sure you have what you need while you're typing.
Yeah, you're all going to see what I'm typing, because it's going to be happening right in front of you.
So while Michael's doing that, it's somewhat related, and I think this is a perfect opportunity to bring it up, because I was going to bring it under old and new business, but when we met with the Lieutenant Governor, one of the things she had asked us about amongst the water and all the other things, you know, what was going on, she asked if there was anything else, you know, significant in the town. And I said, "Yeah, we really haven't done a lot for our seniors, as much as we all would like to, especially when it comes to housing, and our Housing Authority's been very limited. And we receive forty-four thousand dollars a year in capital to manage forty units up at PBD Court." I mean, forty-four thousand dollars doesn't go very far. And if anybody's been up to PBD Court, you've done your tours up there, you could see that, you know, it wasn't by, you know, anybody here wanting to neglect it. It's just, it's old, built in the sixties. And so she had suggested that we try to get together with the DHCD, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development. And so Bruce Tarr set that up for us. We did meet with them. We met here. We did a tour over there. It was great. Brad Jones attended with us. It was very eye-opening. And they loved the idea. You know, they don't have a lot of money either, but they said, "If the town has valuable property, then this probably is the optimum time for us to consider the property maybe at Carpenter Drive and looking, doing an RFP to get that on the street with the developer that could build some senior housing." But their suggestion was, maybe we look at doing it with a mix. So you sell it, let's say you sell that property for a dollar in the RFP, but with the term and condition that, you know, sixty percent of the units or fifty percent of the units have to be for town or resident. At, and then the other fifty could be at market value, where they can make up their money for the investment they're making, or we can be creative any way we want. But the suggestion is now is probably the time, because the building is aging quickly. And if there isn't one unit up there that's, you know, it's funny, you've got seniors and disabled up there. And there isn't one unit that's disabled access, access to it, not one. And they were very concerned about that, and I think that's something we have to keep in mind. As we look at this, we should keep PBD Court in our mind, and it's, it's over, yes, Mr. Belaventz. I see you waving over there. So I wanted to just bring that up, because we had a really good meeting, and I think the timing is right to talk about it now, and that we get, maybe even do a warrant article for that RFP. But I'm letting Mr. Belaventz come in. I'd be curious what the board members think.
It's, we actually, two meetings ago, we were actually discussing that at the CPC, looking at that Carpenter Drive and actually potentially, you know, we're kind of tossing around some ideas of building something at the Carpenter Drive, and then that property over at PBD Court, since you do have a nice water treatment facility right next door, you could actually build something a little bit more bigger and nicer over there. So that's actually something that we were just talking about, so it's funny that you kind of brought it up. And I definitely would love to get in on that as well.
Well, I just think we've got to think of them, while we're going through this thought process, we, I don't want to leave them out of our thoughts. And Kate, you were there, and if you want to give any input, but I'd love to hear from the other board members. I just think the time is right for us to include them in our future plans.
I mean, I, I think we all have had that sort of in our minds, in terms of, we can do some improvement over there, seeing what we can do to, you know, build it up, build something.
We're land-rich and cash-poor, so I say we take advantage of land and try to build a strategy that gets us a win-win.
Yeah, just, you know, PBD Court is all subsidized rental housing based upon income. I don't know if there's a model yet partnering with private developers, you know, other than Section Eight housing, which is a similar type of program, which gives the owner some sort of a cash flow with guarantees from the Commonwealth for most of the rent that's being paid. So to me, are we talking, and again, I don't know what the context was, whether it was going to be market rate or below-market rate for residents to purchase? Or is it going to be rental, subsidized rental for seniors? Now, again, the problem that the Housing Authority has been dealing with is that it's not just seniors, but there are disabled people there, you know, who bring a whole host of different challenges to the Housing Authority in managing, managing the property. So it's, you know, how are we going to, again, I don't know how in-depth you got with anybody from DHCD.
Yep. No, we did talk about it, because the way they explained it to me was, make sure I look at my notes correctly. Because when you get to age sixty, if you're in there, you, you fall out, right?
You fall out of one category and into another.
You fall into another, which...
Which is senior, which is senior housing, as opposed to housing for disabled individuals.
So, you know, we haven't, we never nailed down an exact answer to this. But they thought it was worth me bringing back to the board for us to consider the strategy, because they think it will work. And you could probably structure it using the same structure that we have in place today, but allowing the other units to be market rate to account, for them to be able to make their money. So maybe they build them, they turn those over to the town, and we manage those, and then they take care of the rest. It could be a strategy like that. And it doesn't have to be fifty-fifty. It could be seventy-thirty. It could be whatever we, we're comfortable with. Because we're a property of ten acres, and I'm not saying we have to use all ten. Let's just say we want to use six acres of it. How many units could you fit in there that, you know, are, that fit within the square footage? You know, today, they're living in six hundred square feet.
Yeah, yeah, they're tiny.
Six hundred square feet. So I'm not saying we have to go twice that amount, but maybe you could get a little over a thousand. You know, you could fit a lot of units on ten acres. And I think you can make it, we could build a strategy, and maybe we bring in a consultant. We talked about maybe hiring Francis from TRA at Flatrate to have him consult with us to help us with the strategy.
One of the, I mean, the waiting list at PBD Court is not that long. It hasn't been for years, you know, so that as far as the need, the demand. I think most of the demand in our community is for people who are looking to downsize and stay in the community and age in place, and with some assistance in some, some respects.
Right.
So it's, again, a different model than...
Maybe.
Housing Authority, you know, but, but again, I think what we need to do is, you know, and if you look what's going to be going on with Pulte Homes, you're looking at over fifty-five complexes with prices five, six hundred thousand dollars. That's not affordable for a lot of people, you know, in addition to the real estate taxes and the, and the condo fees that are going to go along with it. It's a different, different demographic than the current members of our community that have been here for forty years.
Do you think that demand at PBD Court is depressed by the condition of PBD Court?
No.
No?
No.
No, 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 no. But just because of the demand...
Again, in relation to strategy for zoning, you know, whether you're going to have, you know, in-law apartments, which more and more families are starting to do with multi-generational families living together under the same roof, those sorts of strategies too.
Mr. Leary, wouldn't you agree, though, that we have to plant, put them in this planning?
Maybe.
Maybe.
Yes. You know, it, it depends on what role the town and our threading is going to play, you know. Yes, we have land resources that we can make available, whether it be through private development or some quasi-governmental agency in conjunction with the state and subsidized housing, which is both state and federal money. But again, the state and federal money there hasn't been forthcoming for years, as you can tell by the condition of PBD Court. So, I mean, we've got a whole host of challenges here, and again, we've been talking about it for years, and I think it needs to be addressed. It's just, I think the strategy should be to help address the needs of the people who currently live in our community, who, again, while the housing market is high, you know, they're land-rich and cash-poor. And they need a place to, if they want to stay in North Reading, they don't want to take everything that they've just sold their home for and dump it into a condo, you know, at the same price they just sold their ranch for. And then have the real estate taxes, which are going to be the same, and the condo fees on top of it. Meantime, they're on fixed incomes and can't afford it. So it's, that's why people don't leave their home, so it's...
Mr. Messeri, you wanted to say something?
I just want to say that we still have a number of articles in the cover.
Nope. We got to move on.
You know, we're drifting away here, and it's quarter past ten.
I don't mean to delay it, but it's an important discussion.
I have to be in Andover at eight-thirty.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, I got it. So...
But again, if we have a generic, a general article, we can include anything pretty much we want.
And that's what I brought up.
Which is what Mr. Messeri was proposing.
Yep, I like it. Very good, Michael. Okay, next.
Delete the other one, right?
So everyone's good with the proposed changes? Great, thank you. Number nine relates to potential, potential lead for supplemental funds for the J.T. Berry Lowell Road property disposition. Right now, we do not have an immediate request, and we were able to obtain funding through the gracious approval of the Finance Committee last month. Thank you to the Finance Committee to help us along. This is something that we were recommending be placed on the warrant as a placeholder in the event such funds are needed for engineering or other related legal costs that might be required for the closing of the sale of the Berry property.
And, Michael, that can be subtracted from the, from the state share, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely, yes. It's a sunk cost. But...
And this is, this includes 102?
Yes, all of them.
Yep, okay.
It could be for either one.
That's correct. Article 10, this is a first of a series of articles that relate to water and wastewater. This would be to request funding for a study and design for water, wastewater connection for long-term needs, most notably the town of Andover, but it's not limited to just the town of Andover. Right now, as you saw in the board's presentation tonight, and on August 21st, we are estimating a cost associated with this article of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And based on the design, it would likely be funded a portion from the Water Enterprise and a portion from the General Fund through borrowing or from available funds, depending upon where we stand as we come up to town meeting. It has a companion article related to it, which is to authorize an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Andover for a term of up to ninety-nine years for portable water and to authorize a filing of special, of a Home Rule petition for legislative approval to effect such an agreement. This would be, again, directly related to number 10. Do you want me to go through all of them, and then we can...
No, I just think it's important that we have this article and have town meeting act upon it so that we don't have to wait till next June to file the Home Rule petition. If we decide to go with Andover, we need to have the tool in our toolbox to move forward on a timely basis, rather than waiting, you know, till June. And again, we're going to be asking Andover to do the same thing. Talking about having a special town meeting potentially in November, specifically for this purpose and authorizing them to do a long-term intermunicipal agreement with us.
So we do 10 and 11, and we're going to pass over 12, over 12?
That would be my expectation, Mr. Chairman, yes. We would be passing over 12. I'd leave it to the board's discretion.
We're delaying for you to pass it over until June.
I defer to the board as to its intention relative to 13, which would relate to an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Reading for a term of up to ninety-nine years. And Article 14 is obviously related as well. It's relative to the town.
I would suggest that we leave those on and ask town meeting to give us, again, give us the tools in the toolbox to, depending upon what decision we make in January, February, March, the board's going to make a determination which way we want to go, and we shouldn't necessarily have to wait for a June town meeting to move forward. I don't want to waste another three to, three to four months just because we didn't have it on here and have favorable action. And what we're going to be asking town meeting to do is trust us to do the due diligence, make a determination, and move forward.
Yeah, I think what we need to do at town meeting is to have a report, which lays out A or B and why these things are on...
Oh, A and B.
Well, we have to take a leave of the meeting.
A and B. A and B, yeah.
Well, it's A or B eventually.
Eventually, but we want to be able to do it on a timely basis, rather than having to wait.
And I would appreciate if you could reach out to the moderator and kind of update him a little bit on this whole strategy, so he's aware. I think it's important that he knows.
So what was the one we talked about, passing over, Michael? I'm sorry.
No, I was asking if we had to pass over 12.
Twelve and thirteen.
And thirteen. And, but you're saying, your suggestion is, no, we go and get approval for both, because that 12 is going to be a sizable number. Yes, Mike.
But we know what that is. I mean, and it, the public's been informed and...
Oh, yeah, they have.
You know, so it's, and again, it allows us to negotiate with Andover, come to a conclusion, and never have to expend the funds or have the funds available to expend on a timely basis.
Town Administrator.
So we will not have any recommended number for Article 12 related to the funding for additional construction, construction costs. I'll just, for everyone's edification, this article was something that we had been planning on going back to last June of 2016 in the planning process for this BMWRA connection. And the thinking was that we would be requesting whatever the projected cost amounts, dollar amounts were for construction at the June town meeting this year, which we did. But we knew that we were going to be going through permitting and potentially be stepping into the bidding phase, and we wanted to have a safeguard available in the event that the bids came back higher than what we had available. Right now, we've not bid, and we have not changed the cost estimates for this project, for the MWRA component, so we don't have a cost amount associated with it.
So then it would be better to take these off and have them in for the June town meeting?
No, just 12.
10 and 12, if 10 and 11 get voted down...
Yeah, I don't think you can do that.
I wouldn't do that, just in case they get voted down. Now you have 12 to, you know, we can pass over.
One other thing that I will note that has come up, and it's come up in our meetings with Reading, it's relative to the authority to borrow, for lack of a better term, from the MWRA to pay back the assessment. We don't have a specific authorization relative to that borrowing. This article includes that. So it may be that we ask that this article be approved with no dollar amount associated with it, but even that action may not be required. But to the chairman's point, without knowing the certainty of the results of 10 and 11, I don't think you can take 12, 13, or 14 off.
Okay. All right, brings us to fourteen.
And this, again, is for, uh, the legislative approval under Article ninety-seven for land that has conservation restrictions on it around the Ipswich River, at the border between the town of North Reading and Reading. Um, we, there's a possibility that those parcels may be, um, needed, uh, and might be
Conservation land.
Yeah, conservation land that, on which we may need to look to construct the interconnection, depending upon the outcome of the permitting at the state and local level in the town of North Reading and Reading. Um, so this would give us the authority to proceed with that if need be as well. Article fifteen, the social host responsibility bylaw, uh, this is the most current version of the bylaw, uh, as was presented during the earlier part of this evening's meeting.
So, does any, have any strong objection to it?
Objection, I, I, I'm fine with putting it on there, I don't know that I will be a supporter of it yet, but okay with including it, sure. If that's, if that's wishes the majority of the board.
I'd like to keep on. Messer?
Uh, I would leave it on, but I like Steve, you know, first glance, uh, of the presentation, and then some of the material that we had, and our warrant didn't match this, so... And our, and our agenda, and our package, basically. There was a little difference in a couple places, so...
All right.
It's clear we have to do something.
Okay, Andrew, sixteen.
Article sixteen, this is a proposal from the Department of Public Works, which, uh, we hope will update the process and the terms for betterments. And for those, uh, of you who may not have had a chance to read it, um, effectively what it would do is replace the current requirement that the town fund fifty percent of the cost of a project with language that would allow for up to one-hundred percent of the project to be borne by the abutting property owners. And then, secondly, it also allows for the long-term financing of such costs relative, rather than requiring an upfront payment for the private property owner's portion of the, um, the cost. So these are two things that we hope might make the betterment program more accessible to, uh, those who have bought roads that are, that have not been accepted, in order to get them constructed to acceptable standards.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just as a, for the social host bylaw, I'd like to make a, uh, motion to place a social host bylaw as an article on the October two, two thousand seventeen town meeting warrant.
Second?
Second.
Mr. O'Leary, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you for catching that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Clerk.
All right, so that, in that particular article, Michael,
Pass that back.
I see this, so there is going to be a public hearing, though,
He wants it back.
Every time we go through that process.
Through which process? Oh, relative to the betterment?
The betterment easement, yeah.
So, the, the short answer is that, again, and the Department of Public Works has been leading this, and they are not here, obviously, this evening to speak to it, uh, but, uh, my understanding from the commissar and town council is that there is an individual requirement to set the dollar amount associated with each project.
Okay.
I don't know how likely these projects are to proceed. It's generally intended to address situations where the resident steps forward and want to make improvements to their road. What happens now is basically they come to the town and they say, "We want to have a betterment take place on our property." Um, and the, the town's response is, "Well, we don't have fifty percent of the cost appropriated in order for that to happen, and even if we did, you need to come up with a total amount of your share today in order for us to do that project." I'm sure that the vice chair is familiar with betterments, often you're able to amortize that cost over a longer period of time, and so that it's more affordable for the resident, with the town taking on the borrowing responsibility and administering the project. The department's hope, and, again, I'm speaking for the department now, is that it might make the process more accessible to people who are looking to see their road improved, particularly the dirt roads that we have in town, or paved roads that are not built to, to the standard. The DPW director and town engineer obviously can speak more to it at the warrant article hearing on the eighteen.
Sounds good. All right, seventeen?
This would be to appropriate money for special council legal expenses associated with the secondary school building project. We don't have a dollar amount, um, available that, that we're looking to propose at this point in time, but, uh, there may be such a request presented to the town meeting, and we hope to have a, an, uh, an accurate accounting of, uh, any potential request at the hearing on September eighteenth, the warrant article hearing.
Okay.
Article eighteen is relative to the sale of town-owned land at Eight Devens Road, and to follow up to the earlier discussion the board had this evening. I believe there is a similar motion to place this article on the warrant in the packet this evening, um, to allow for potential requests for proposals, process to dispose of.
Andrew?
I think it's, Devens might be O N S. Not sure. Is it right?
Mr. Chairman, I move to place an article on the October two, two thousand seventeen town meeting warrant to authorize the board's selection to sell map twenty, forty-two parcel one-twenty-eight dash eight Devens Road by seeking proposals for disposal of the property.
Do I have a second for discussion? Kate?
Oh, we're adding one.
You want a second first?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Is that the right parcel ID?
Yeah.
Says Article seventy-one, I mean, uh, parcel seventy-one
Oh, it's map twenty-six.
Doesn't match the agenda, you're right.
Match, oh, map forty, parcel one-twenty-eight.
Bear with me, I can check through the GIS system.
Oh, the other one's wrong, too.
It matches the agenda. Map forty-two parcel one-twenty-eight?
No, you just wrote seventy-one.
Yeah. This is for...
This is Eight Devens Road.
Yeah. Eight Devens Road.
On that wire.
Forty-two, one-twenty-eight.
It's different on the wire.
Oh, they're okay.
You are correct. Thank you, that's correct, it's one-twenty-eight, parcel one-twenty-eight.
Any more discussion? So...
You're making the correction on Article eighteen?
Just made it.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, Article nineteen, which is a, one that's not in our packet, because we put this in here this evening after our executive session discussion.
So this is my quick attempt at, uh, an article
Very good.
to try to achieve the, the outcome. And, basically, for the public's edification, this is effectively, uh, an article to provide the authority to the board, if necessary, to, uh, obtain through purchase, gift, swap, or eminent domain, the fee easement or lesser interest in, um, the easement for portable water through one-hundred Lowell Road, also known as, uh, Edgewood Apartments, identified as map fourteen parcel nine on Lowell Road.
Okay.
Good idea.
Do I have a motion? Do we need a motion?
Uh, you want to vote to place that on the article, that, that warrant?
I think it would be...
Mr. Chairman, I move to place Article nineteen on the October two thousand seventeen town meeting warrant.
Second.
Second, any discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, through you, if you want, the board wishes to proceed to perhaps the minutes and legal bills, I'll print the copy of the warrant for signature, since the constable's here this evening.
Yes, um, Mr. Schultz, if you could go to the minutes of August twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, regular?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the August twenty-one, two thousand seventeen regular session minutes, as written.
I got a second. Second by Mr. Messer, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
You get executive session, too.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the August twenty-one, two thousand seventeen executive session minutes, as written.
Second.
Got a motion, I have a second by Mr. O'Leary, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Unanimous.
Okay, approve the July legal bills.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for July two thousand seventeen in the amount of seven thousand forty-nine dollars and forty-two cents as follows, Culpman and Page General, six thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-two cents, Culpman and Page Labor, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty cents, and Thompson, uh, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars, for a total of seven thousand forty-nine dollars and forty-two cents.
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Messer, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, we're going to go to old, new business while the town administrator is working on some administrative actions. Andrew, you want to start us off tonight?
Yeah, just, uh, good luck to all the kids going back to school.
Oh, they really are, huh? I don't know, I wouldn't know that anymore. All right, great.
Yep.
Safe in the roads out there. Anything else?
No.
Mr. Messer.
Well, I, I was just going to say, school starts tomorrow, and a lot of communities have already started. Traffic will be up, and there'll be kids walking on the roads. And I just think everybody needs to step up their, uh, activity in terms of keeping, keeping the eye on the road, especially with the kids, and especially where usually when they first start, there's a lot of disorganization and, uh, everything going on, so...
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Messer?
Uh, no, actually, I don't have anything else, Michael.
Mr. O'Leary.
After the vote this evening, I'm looking forward to the meeting at eight-thirty tomorrow morning at Andover, more than I would be if the vote went the other way, because we still had a meeting scheduled, so I thank, uh, my colleagues for that, and maybe they'll give us donuts or something, I don't know. Yeah, coffee, yeah, coffee, well, the coffee machine, I mean, it was so bad, their coffee machine actually burned out. That's, uh, so, anyway.
I think what's important tomorrow is to start to lay out a definite timeframe, so that all the tasks that need to be performed are going to get performed on time, so we can keep to the schedule that we'd like to keep to.
Again, the motions, yeah, the motions that were made tonight, uh, gave us and them, uh, some clear direction as far as the timing and, and what needs to be done. So I think that's very important, and again, uh, I, I look forward to continuing the, uh, discussion with them and, uh, seeing where it leads us. Again, back to school, just drive carefully, be aware, and I'm sure you'll be going a lot slower, because there's a lot more buses out there. And then, on a, on a sad note, and it's sad to hear that, uh, retired Sergeant Dennis Marr passed away
Oh, yes, he's right.
Uh, this, this week, and, uh, Dennis was a terrific police officer, uh, one of the nicest individuals you ever wanted to meet, I mean, even with all the stresses of the job. I never heard a cross word out of the guy about anybody or any issue that was going on. Uh, he did his work, he was a good sergeant, he, uh, you know, headed up his shift and, uh, served our community well, and he died an untimely death due to cancer, and, uh, and our condolences go to his wife Kathy and his children and grandchildren, and, uh, again, he's a terrific public servant, uh, great police officer, and to the North Reading Police Department family, our condolences to them, too. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I'd just say that, um, in regards to the Andover, I know you, you guys have really been putting a lot of time into this, but I think it's, it's going to show a lot of value, and we do appreciate, and if you hate to add any more workload to you, but when you have a chance, between now and October town meeting, if you could reach out to the town moderator, just to get him up to speed, so he understands the way the warrant is structured, so he's not overwhelmed, I think that would be helpful, so...
You're good.
And I just wanted to say to all the parents who, who aren't already volunteering, who are empty nesters, come and join us if you want, if you're looking for something to do, although, I mean, I, I'm not there yet, but I can imagine there's probably a lot slated, but come and join us, fill out a citizen activity form, and we got plenty of stuff people can do here, right? On a volunteer basis.
I'm going to hold off and let the town administrator go through his report real quick, and then I'll wrap it up, if you have anything else.
Oh, we got, we got to sign the...
Do we, oh, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to sign the October two thousand seventeen town meeting warrant.
Second.
I got a motion, a second, any more discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Mr. Verro, thank you for sticking around so long and coming back. So, Michael, what was signed, do you want to do your town administrator's part?
I'm happy to, yes, thank you.
I forgot we didn't do the motion, I'm not already...
Mr. Chairman, just a note, that seasonal water use restrictions are still in effect. I ask the townspeople to be aware of that, they're posted on the town's website. Uh, adhering to the use restrictions will allow us to avoid further restrictions later in the season, if, uh, we're hoping that we can make it, uh, until October first, which is usually a good indicator of whether or not, uh, of when we no longer need the restrictions, and our hope is we can make it through the month of September, so we just ask the public's continued cooperation. Roadway reclamation on Sunset Avenue, Wyoming Avenue, Wagon Drive has been scheduled to begin September twelfth, weather permitting. Hydrant flushing is scheduled to begin the week of September eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, and is expected to continue until late October. The flushing program begins in the area of the water supply sources and moves progressively across the town, using areas that have already been cleaned to provide the water to areas yet to be flushed. Flushing will take place on Mondays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, typically between the hours of eight AM and three PM. Residents and business owners are cautioned that they may experience discolored water during the hours of flushing in their area. Details are posted on the town website, including a schedule, uh, of streets to be flushed. And one thing I will note, we did not do hydrant flushing last fall, so, uh, the departments are going to make a concerted effort to get it completed this fall. Um, there may be a, you know, more noticeable impact because of the fact that we didn't flush last fall, um, but, uh, there are, as guidelines, there are guidelines on the town website relative to how to deal with, uh, any discoloration the public may see. Relative to, um, something that the board has been discussing over the past couple of years, we are in the process of finalizing an employee recognition event for this fall. We had initially looked to have an event as soon as this coming Friday, but have opted for a later date. It would be a lunch to be scheduled, uh, held, to be held at the Hillview Country Club, and it would be, uh, the cost of it would be paid for by both, uh, approved funds for employee recognition in this year's budget, as well as unexpended funds from last year's employee recognition budget. I anticipate that it'll begin at twelve fifteen PM on a Friday afternoon, and that the town hall would close at twelve o'clock noon that day, which would be an hour early. Once we have a final date identified, we will post appropriate announcements and let the board know. And finally, um, relative to the status of Martin's Pond, we did receive the second test results from the lab in Connecticut today, that indicated that the pond's presence of cyanobacteria was below the state threshold, which means that we're able to lift the restrictions on the use of the pond. There'll be a detailed advisory that will go out tomorrow morning, as well as a reverse nine-one-one in the area in the immediate vicinity of the pond. Um, the most important thing that, uh, we'll note is that the pond will be open for recreational boating and fishing. There is no swimming at town-owned land, including Clark Park, the bridge on Borough's Road, and the, um, Travelway Launch Ramp, and, uh, public is advised that any swimming in the pond, because it is not a tested bathing facility, and the town does not monitor the water quality, is at the public's own risk. Again, there'll be a more detailed advisory that will come out tomorrow morning. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you.
Someone else is maybe going to say this, but a friendly reminder as well, it's caught up in the staple here, I couldn't see it, that the annual veterans dinner, again, is Sunday, September twenty-fourth, at the Hillview Country Club.
Thank you. I hope the members can attend, I will, unfortunately, will move you out of town. But my condolences to Sanjay Marr and his family, it is a sad loss, he's definitely taken too early in his life.[1731.33] Other than that, nope, I don't have anything else, I just want to thank the boards. I know our ops tempo has been pretty high for all of us, and I know we're all working on a lot of subjects that are very important to the town, but it's going to be really worth it, and I'm already happy where things are going. We do have our strategic planning session coming up, and what's the date again?
So it's this coming Monday, September eleventh, and it will be at the police department's training room at six thirty PM. And you should have an email from either Karen or Jane relative to the meals to be provided.
So what I'd like to do is, sort of my appreciation to the board for everything's been going on, I would like to bring the food, if that's okay, and I would select the menu, and I will bring it with me from my, my market, that way they won't have to order anything, and I can, I think I know you all enough that I can kind of figure out enough plates. Kate, I'll just bring you a nice salad with a couple tomatoes on it. But if that's okay with you board, with the board members, I would love to do that, and then you get an opportunity to taste some of the food from my place, my family's recipes, so.
I can, I can speak to the meal, I can speak to the meal that I had when I was visiting a few months ago, and it was excellent, so.
So, no objection? I know you all look forward to having the meal, but I figured you eat there all the time, we'll do something different, and it's my little way of thanking you guys, so that everybody's been working so hard, and I appreciate, and it's patriot season, starting Thursday night, I'm pretty excited, so I'll take a motion to adjourn and get these guys off to sleep there.
Give you a motion to adjourn.
You got a second? Oh, wait a minute, sorry, Jane's holding up. You guys could be making that?
Yes.
There, so we, we had a listing of article recommendations, meaning the recommendations for the Warren Articles, which I understand is probably a bit difficult to do, given the fact that we don't have the dollar amounts at this point in time. But as it stand, right, stands right now, without the recommendations, and we don't have any recommendations from the Finance Committee at this point either, each of the articles, and there are nineteen of them that we ended up with, would say recommend at Town Meeting. If the board is okay with that, then we can leave it as, as is. If there's any articles with which you want to recommend now, then you certainly could take that action. I think we could probably do it quickly enough. And the one that I'm thinking of is the water, wastewater relative to Andover. You may wish to make a recommendation for those two articles.
I think in the spirit of time, as my two colleagues have to get up in about six hours.
Well, I think those two we could do quickly, right? I think it would be important to print it, and send it that way.
When does it go to the printer?
It goes on Friday.
This Friday?
This Friday, yes.
Nope, but the printer, it goes to the printer on Friday.
Yeah, I mean, you can report your recommendations, it just won't be in the warrant.
We'll go it out, we'll go it out.
That's all I'm noting, they just won't be in the.
Your hard work, how, how do you want to handle it?
Yeah, I mean, I'm in favor of recommending all of them, as a matter of fact, you know, including the ones of the MWRA. I want to see favorable action on all of them by Town Meeting.
Well, it'll take a few minutes, but Mr. Schultz will just pull out his list of articles, and we can make a, from the top.
He'll put them back up.
Number one, recommend.
Yeah.
Number two, recommend.
All right. Number one, we're going to recommend.
Actually, if you put up.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article one.
As printed in the.
Here an act on reports of town officers and committees.
To recommend, yep. So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Sure.
I have a second by Mr. O'Larry. All those in favor, I mean, any discussion? All good? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Article two, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article two prior to your bills.
Recommend at Town Meeting.
Yep.
Because we don't have a dollar amount. For what?
To say recommend at Town Meeting.
Oh, it's already.
I move to recommend at Town Meeting, Article two, prior to your bills.
Second.
All those in favor recommending a Town Meeting?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article three.
I move to, well, what do we want? We want to recommend transfer funds or capital improvements?
No, we haven't got the number yet, so recommend at Town Meeting.
Let's just, let's just vote on the ones we can, we can vote on, okay? So, Article four. Number three, we're not, we're not going to make any action, we're just going to leave it as recommend at Town Meeting, okay? We're not going to vote to recommend at Town Meeting.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
We don't need to.
We just need to vote on the ones.
That's it, we're going to vote on the ones we want to vote on.
All right, Article four.
Nope.
Same thing.
Same thing. Five, six, seven. No, oh, yeah, eight, we have a number for, seven, I mean, right? We have a number?
It's generally fifty thousand dollars.
Yep.
It's what? Hundred and fifty.
Fifty, no, this is, Town Repairs, the Town.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep.
So we want to do seven?
Move to recommend, right.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend at Town Meeting, Article seven, Fund Repairs of Town Building.
No, 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 we're moving to recommend Article seven.
That's what I said.
Oh, you said it, I'm sorry, okay.
Fund Repairs of Town Building.
Yeah, second.
Second. You got a motion, a second, any more discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
We want to do eight B, right?
Eight, no, it's all done.
It's eight.
It's just eight, he cleaned it up.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article eight, Fund Town Facilities Master Plan.
I have a second?
Second.
I got a second, Mr. O'Larry, any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Article nine?
Eight, we're going to just leave it alone, right?
Yep, leave it alone. Now, this one here, we definitely.
Town we want to recommend, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend, this says Article thirteen, it'd be Article ten, appropriate funds for study and design, water, wastewater connection.
We've got a second by Mrs. Minypelli. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
Article eleven, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article eleven, authorize intermunicipal agreement with town of Andover and home rule petition for potable water.
Second? Second by Mr. O'Larry. Any more discussion? None heard?
Who had the second there?
I didn't.
Steve?
All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
Article twelve, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article twelve, fund construction of pump station, Reading and North Reading Water Improvements for NWRA Water Interconnection.
I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Larry, any more discussion? Yes. Good.
You want us to wait?
That's, that's, that's how I feel, I mean, I think that for Town Meetings, you know, the, the, the board may desire to have affirmative outcome on twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, I just don't know what the intention would be, I mean, does the board wish to seek affirmative approval if ten and eleven are both approved?
Yeah, we do.
Yes, I do. That's me.
Because it gives us two different ways we can go.
Right. Because it doesn't restrict us to wait until next June.
It keeps us, it keeps us, well, we don't have to go back to Town Meeting.
Yeah, the key is going to be in the presentation, or we make it clear, the Town Meeting, what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, we want to show that we're staying on parallel paths, and we're going to make sure every one of them, both of these subjects are very important.
Okay.
Okay? All right.
So you got to vote on that one.
Well, we got to have a discussion, Kate had her hand up.
I was thinking, I think along the same lines as the TA, however, I do recall we already talked about this and want to keep moving along in tandem.
I think we can justify it. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thirteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article thirteen, authorize intermunicipal agreement